Okay, welcome to the September 23, 2019 Board Meeting of the Manatee County School Board. I'm going to ask that Vice Chair Messenger lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all rise, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Barber. I think we're at capacity, folks.
All right, Mr. Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Saunders. This is a very special month for us. Actually, the dates that we're celebrating tonight go from September 15th to October 15th, and it's Hispanic Heritage Month, and that's always a big celebration for our school district and really for our county, so we are really glad to participate in it. And to get us started, I'm going to introduce Deborah Estes. She's our Director of ESOL, Migrant, and Dual Language Programs.
(applause). What a nice crowd. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to some beautiful English language learners from San Jacinto Elementary who are here to perform for you, but I do not want to forget the wonderful staff that got them here and worked with them so they could perfect their performance. We have the Principal Mary Beth Mason of San Jacinto, Jamie Becker, who is their music teacher, Neris Fanning, who is an ESOL Resource Teacher in the building, Maria James, first grade, and then Twanda Means, who is their GET, who comes to everything for San Jacinto. And without further ado, I would love to introduce you to the beautiful children from San Jacinto, and it's such a nice reason to start this meeting, a nice way to start our meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you.
(music playing) Canta el gallo, canta el gallo con el kirikirikirikiri. La gaina, la gaina con el cara 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 cara. Los poihuelos, los poihuelos con el pio 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 pio. Y por eso los grandes amores de muchos colores me gustan a mí. Y por eso los grandes amores de muchos colores me gustan a mí.[380.12][382.12](applause).
Okay, Deborah has some additional words for us to say?
Thank you. I love seeing our Y right here in front of us. It makes my heart so happy. As of today, the school district of Manatee County has over 17,000 Hispanic students, which turns out to be about 33% of our enrollment. Even though they're not all in our English language learner program, they definitely, our students and their families, have a huge impact on our community. So Hispanic Heritage Month is a time for our schools to celebrate with all of our students and the contributions that the Latino community has had in our schools, society, and community. This year's theme nationally is Hispanic History Month, A History of Serving Our Nation. We have asked that schools every year hold Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations and invite their whole schools. We've had some amazing events in the past, Blackburn Elementary, SUG Middle School, Lee Middle School, and again this year, there are at least 12 schools that have events already scheduled, and Ms. Yost is going to hand out a list to you later, so if you want to join any of our celebrations over the next month, you are all more than welcome. And when we ask schools to hold events, we send them PowerPoints, we send them relevant information, information on doing contests at school, so that everybody in the building can learn the contributions of our Latino friends and families that support our schools, our local businesses, and everything in between in Manatee County. We've had some very exciting events in the ESOL, dual language, and migrant world this month, but our biggest thing we've been very excited about is that we started our first dual-language program at Daughtry Elementary. We have a two-way immersion model where we have half the students who are native English speakers, half of our students are Spanish speakers, and we have two kindergarten teachers, Jennifer Rondo and Luisa Castano, who are doing a fabulous job with their students. They spend half their day in an English classroom fully immersed, they spend the other half of their day in a Spanish class fully immersed. These students, next year, we will move to first grade at Daughtry, we'll have a kindergarten in first grade, and then we'll keep building, and right now, we're currently exploring opportunities to expand for our next school year. So I thank you for enjoying our lovely students, they did a fabulous job, and now we have...
I'd like to invite Elena Garcia, our Director of Federal Programs and Grants, to introduce your team, if you could.
Well, thank you very much. I think that all of the hard work that goes into working and supporting our ELL students should be acknowledged, so I want to take a moment to acknowledge Deb and her team. You've already been introduced to Deb, but a majority of our team is standing up here, so I'd like to introduce them to you. We have Carol Foy, who is a specialist in our program, Ritten. Brittany Hernandez, also an ESOL specialist. Karen Erickson is with our Title I program, and certainly our Title I schools are filled with our ELL and Hispanic students. We have Myra Sesteros, who has been with the program for, I think, 25 years, 28. 28 and going strong. And we also have Susan Maxwell, another ESOL specialist. And Maggie Connell, also an ESOL specialist. And, I'm sorry, did I miss anybody? Michelle, over here, is our district translator, so she's responsible for many of the translations that go home to families, so she does great work for us, so thank you, Michelle. And, I'm sorry, Megan, our Title I coordinator, Megan Johnson, sitting there in the crowd. Trying to hide. And then finally, I'd like to acknowledge all of the parents that are here, so if you are here with your child, would you mind standing up so we can acknowledge you? Maybe somebody could say that?
Now it's time for a proclamation, and Charlie, I believe you have the proclamation?
I have the proclamation, thanks, Mike, but I am going to enlist the help of Izabella Bravo and her sister Amelia.
I'm going to come stand up here for moral support, I promise I would.
You're good, you got it, yep.
During natural Hispanic Heritage... National Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the contributions made by Hispanic and Latino Americans in the United States and celebrate their culture and heritage. And Hispanic Americans have a profound and positive influence in our community, the state of Florida, of Florida and Manatee County, through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and community service. And generations of Latino Americans have served in Americans Army Forces to defend liberty and advance democracy around the world, and Hispanic Americans have worked to overcome many challenges, often in the face of discrimination and prejudice, and we have successfully embraced the opportunities of American dream, and together, we recognize the Latino community in Manatee County. Those who willingness to share the heritage of traditions have made our community a better place to live. Nationality, September 15th to October 15th, the focal point for recognizing and celebrating the many achievements of Hispanic Americans and applauding their proud legacy of service and dedication to this country. Be to proclaim by the School Board of Manatee County that the month of September 15th through October 15th, 2019, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Hispanic Heritage Month. Adopt with a...
Quorum.
A quorum, present and voting this 24th day of September, of September 20, 2019.
I'm going to ask, I want to say that I tried to read that, and she did better than I did. I'm going to have you all come, stand out front, in front of the podium here, and I'm going to invite the members from San Jacinto to go up there, and then any of our employees who are of Hispanic heritage that would like to join them, please feel free to welcome, to come up here and get a photo in front of the school board, so if you all could line up where you were when you sang your song.
I tried, I tried.
Oh, my daughter's favorite.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You did a great job.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
What if it was?
Wait, the water bottle's a little ghetto.
What are you looking for?
Water, trying to find water.
Um, a pen?
Did you trade with him? Did you give him a purple?
No, I'm keeping my purple. Forget it, I like purple. Rather purple than blue.
I don't blame you. That looks very nice.
All right, what a treat. It goes to moot some. The next thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve? Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger, to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to amend.
Okay, we have a motion?
Would you like to make a motion to amend? Would you like me to go into the item now, or?
No, the, okay. I, pardon me, I should have said, is there a discussion? And I guess you're saying that you have a motion to make to amend.
I'd like to make a motion to amend one item, and I'd also like to pull one item from consent to be discussed at New Business.
Okay, you, what is, you have two amendments to the agenda.
Sure, if you want to do it that way.
Well, okay, you have a motion, what specifically are you talking about?
I'd like to add a motion to approve funding for the Stand Prevention Program, effective October 1st, in the amount of $221,000.
$221,000, you'd like to add that to tonight's agenda?
I would like to add that to New Business, and then in addition, I would like to remove Consent Item Number Five, to be discussed at New Business, pulled from consent.
Okay, what is Consent Item Number Five?
That is an item regarding television equipment, sorry. Oh wait, I'm still...
Studio equipment?
It is, yeah, it's the studio equipment item. I've got to re-sign in to get back to the, I was still on the workshop agenda, I apologize. But that's the nature of my motion.
Okay, well, there has been a motion made by Board Member Kennedy to amend the agenda that was published to the public and provided to us to make two amendments. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the First Amendment is to add, under New Business, I guess this would be adding, making it New Business Number Three, to ask that this board expend $221,000 tonight, and...
What?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I've got an item...
Yeah, what's it for? I didn't hear it.
It's for the Stand students against negative decisions. I talked about this briefly in my board comments at the end of last meeting. This was the funding that the district applied to the CSAB for and was denied, so I wanted to bring this back to us. And so the purpose of both of these amendments is to provide this item, and then the purpose of pulling Five from consent is to find the money to fund this item. I'm not asking for new money, I want this to be a, you know, I'm, I want to use Consent Number Five to pay for this item, so it is a net zero to the budget.
Okay, Board Member, is there any further discussion? Okay, is there a second?
I do, I can't really be discussed, I guess.
Okay, that's right, and you're correcting me, and I apologize. The Chair has not heard a second to the motion, so we don't go on to discussion, and we'll move on. Now we'll call, is there any further discussion with respect to the motion that's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, my motion died for lack of a second.
Yes, it did.
Can I make one more statement about this?
No, we're moving on.
Board Members, I submitted this item last week, and the Chair refused to add it, so this is why I have to do this now.
Okay, well, the discussion's over, Board Member Kennedy.
Yeah, just want to make sure they're aware of that.
Well, that's fine.
I'm going to second that.
Okay, it's been seconded, now we'll have discussion.
I think it should be added to the agenda, because I think any board member that believes it should be added to the agenda, it should be added to the agenda, and if that was a request, then I think it should be honored.
Okay.
We are a team, we honor each other's votes.
Okay. The, Mr. Kennedy's motion has been seconded, now we can discuss this. Would you like to speak on behalf of this, Mr. Kennedy?
I just want to speak on behalf of adding it to the agenda, please.
What?
I only want to say that I request of my board colleagues that we add this to the agenda, so it can be discussed later during New Business.
Okay, okay, excuse me, okay, the agenda has been, well, we have before us a motion that has been seconded to add to the agenda two changes from that presented to the public, and now we will discuss that motion. The Chair recognizes Board Member Hope's.
So I just want to make sure I understand that you requested that an item be placed on the agenda, and you requested this item to be removed from consent because it is the source of funding for your requested item? And when was the request made? It doesn't matter, I mean, it was made prior to the meeting?
Last Thursday.
Okay, all right, and it was not honored, okay.
I'm going to ask staff to clarify. Was there, I don't recall the removal of Number Five, I'm going to direct this to, you know, staff. Was, can staff confirm my understanding at that time?
I can tell you what I know, Number Five was only brought to my attention today, like, right before the workshop.
Okay, so that confirms my understanding. There wasn't any request, you know, prior to, really right now?
The request of adding the other item was brought earlier.
Right.
The request to possibly look at amending items on the consent came in today, and there was no time for discussion because it came in late.
Okay, this is the first I'm aware concerning Number Five. Now, we're discussing this proposed amendment, and Board Member Golden, you have some comments you'd like to share?
I'm just wondering why we're considering two different actions in one motion. The motion, I thought, to add this to the agenda, whatever this is, and then there's another request, a second motion, to take what is on the consent agenda and remove it to, remove it to New Business. And those are two different things, even though I'm told that this that we're adding is designed to provide funding for students against negative decisions, but the money that we're being asked to take off of the, I'm sorry, is Number Five, approval of the use of the Hillsborough County Public Schools bid on studio equipment, purchase, install, repair and parts, revision, and additional $200,000, am I right? That's what we're being asked to take off? Those are two different agenda items, so I'm going to ask that they be separated and that we vote on them separately, so that we get an explanation of why I agree wholeheartedly that we accord each other the respect that's due in terms of adding to the agenda. It's not the Chair's agenda, it's the Board's agenda, and so I agree with that. Whether or not I'm willing to take $200,000 away from the purchase bids that were on the consent agenda, I think I'd really rather hear from the school superintendent about that, that's all.
Okay, what would you say? Okay, those were Board Member Golden's comments, Vice Chair Messenger?
I was just going to say, I think that the merits of that decision can be discussed when that item comes up. This is only asking for it to be moved to just be discussed. We can still vote it up or down, just like we would on the consent agenda. This is only asking so that he can give that further explanation.
I'm sorry, okay, then I misunderstood, because I thought that that was...
I believe that there will be more explanation and probably information from the superintendent, but this is really only asking for them to be moved, so that we can further discuss it later.
Okay, okay, thank you. Board Member Hope?
So just to clarify, we've got one item that is being moved off the consent agenda, that's, the motion moves Number Five to Number 10, New Business Discussion Items Removed From the Consent Agenda, right? And then we have, under New Business, Section 11, which would be what, the third item, which would be your motion for the Board to approve the funding for the Stand Program? Okay, all right, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the agenda that I'm looking at, under New Business Non-Consent Items, had two items on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought that Mr. Hope said, like, Number 11, or something like that.
He's looking at the computer that has the numbers of each of the...
Well, I don't know what he's looking at. On the, okay, on the agenda that I had before me, under New Business, it has, before we act on this, two items of New Business, and I understand that Mr. Kennedy's motion includes adding a third item to New Business, which would be to provide funding for this Stand Program in the amount of $200,000.
$221,000.
$221,000, that's my understanding.
But also, he's removing Number Five from consent.
And he's asking that us, that we remove, you know, just remove from the agenda.
No.
No?
Move it to New Business Discussion Items Pulled From Consent, which is, if you look on the left side of your screen, that's where Dr. Hope's came up with 10 and 11.
Okay, to move that to Remove From Consent. Okay, that would be Number Seven, or excuse me. What number would you have that, Mr. Kennedy?
The new 10-3, so... So consent item number five will be the new 10-3, under new business discussion items removed from the consent agenda. And his motion to approve the stand funding would be item number 11-3.
They're calling this 10, and this 11 on the computer.
Okay. I'm sure staff can, that's not what's on the printout, but the motion's been made. Is there any further discussion concerning board member Kennedy's motion? The chair hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, indicate by saying nay. Nay? Okay, it passes four to one. The, now, with that amendment being made, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Okay, it was moved by?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
After the agenda's amended by the, by the motion, then the previous motion to approve the agenda is what's on the table now.
Okay. It's already on the table.
Already on the table.
Okay. If, is there any further discussion concerning the agenda? The chair hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The amended agenda is approved. Okay. The, the chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under agenda amendments on the September 24, 2019, agenda updated September 23, 2019, and posted to the district website. I guess that's already been covered. And the, those amendments are approved because, by the actions we've already taken. The reports and presentation. I'm going to ask a report concerning the attendance of representatives of this board in Manatee, at the Manatee Chamber of Commerce Annual Planning Retreat. And I'm going to ask if Mr. Hope's, who was there, if he could lead off and share with our, our audience and our community, your impressions, what occurred, and how you felt about it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this was the third one of these retreats that I attended, and it's my understanding that it was the largest attendance for the Manatee Chamber of Commerce's annual planning retreat. The chairman attended, and Mr. Kennedy and I attended. On Saturday, Superintendent Saunders and Kevin Chapman, who is our new director of strategic planning, presented the strategic planning process of the district. And then also, there was a breakout section where a number of community members chose to participate in the breakout discussion around the district's strategic planning process. And I will tell you, I think this year, the, the planning retreat was pretty much about the school district, and, and the successes that we've had, the direction that we're going, and the, the call to engage the community. I think the superintendent had the first meeting with the community members on the strategic planning process. And, and I got a lot of feedback from employers about their desire to have input in the direction that we're going, especially around job preparation. And I think it was really a coming of the community leaders, together with county commissioners, city council members, business leaders, all focused on, on moving the county forward. And, you know, my sense was that the school district was pretty much the center of most of those conversations, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board member Hope. Board member Kennedy?
Sure, I'll be quick. I want to thank the superintendent for her presentation to the attendees regarding the, not only the status of the school district, but a lot of the new programs that have been initiated under your superintendency. And I feel like I say this every meeting, but we, we, as a board, and sometimes chatter in the community gets stuck on some of the negativity around the district, but it was a good reminder from the superintendent about all the positive things going on, and the much improved academic and financial status of the district. And as Dr. Hope said, it was a great session to get, you know, other community leaders together to talk about the direction of the district, and Mr. Chapman was there to assist in that effort as well. So that's about it. It's a, it's a great annual event, and I'm glad the chamber puts it on.
Okay, thank you, board member Kennedy. It is a wonderful event. It's well worth the time and what are going down there, not just for, you know, sharing our thoughts about where we are, where we're going, which was done in a superb fashion by our staff, Chapman, as well as the superintendent. It was the hit of the, the get-together. And I, I think it says something about how fortunate we are to live in a community with a great Chamber of Commerce, and they support public education. They appreciate how important it is, you know, for having a good community and going forward. And it's, the staff of the Chamber of Commerce goes through a great deal of effort to, you know, not just support public education, but put together a forum where we can explain, respond to questions that the community might have about where we are and where we're going. And I, I just, I was just so proud to be there. And almost, I think you know I'm a little bit of a sap, but I was, it was so good, you know, that, and Superintendent Saunders' presentation and Kevin's presentation was so good, and I had that just totaled me by dozens of people down there. So you can, you know, take some pride in it, too. And I'm glad we were able to be down there. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for being there, for your reports. Next item of business is approval of a tax anticipation note, series 2019. The superintendent. Do you have a motion concerning this matter?
Yes, I recommend the approval of resolution authorizing a section 1011.13 Florida statutes, tax anticipation note, or 10, series 2019.
So moved.
Okay. The superintendent's recommendation's been moved by board member Kennedy. It's been seconded by vice chair Messenger. Is there discussion? The chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and indicate by saying nay. The motion is approved, 5-0. The next item of business is approval of the minutes. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
I'll be coming.
I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, thank you. This needs some autographs and for people to leave town real quickly, so this can be approved. So we're going to be in recess for 10 minutes. Okay. Thank you very much.
This morning, we had a question from the audience starting to process that we speak into our mics. There's folks that have children here.
Oh, okay, that's good. I don't, yeah. Okay, are we all, please, sit down? It's Gina Messenger Show. All right, okay, you're gonna take it. Okay, please, sit down, and we're gonna resume the meeting. And the next thing on the agenda is public comments. And we're fortunate enough to have our vice chair, Messenger, here to proceed with public comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go forward with our typical spiel. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speakers must stand at the podium and not approach the dais. If a speaker has a handout to present to the board, those must be given to the agency clerk for distribution. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I will start with Mr. Nelson, with Mr., after Mr. Nelson will be Mr. Salazar. What? What am I gonna do if I don't hear from you today? Mr. Salazar, come on down. And after that, Mr. Hacizinski. Hacizinski, all right.
I have a couple students from Palmetto High School that are gonna be standing with me.
All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to the Manatee County School Board and your commitment to achieving solutions by being here. I'm here today before you to outline some issues that have been long overdue in fixing. And I believe that it is only time to confront, not only time to confront and speak about them, but actually rectify them with resources I know that this district has. First, fourth, I'd like to speak about the issue I find most pressing, in which the students approached me to be their speaker. Now, I didn't attend Palmetto High School, nor do I have a child there, but they approached me and asked me to speak for, so we put this together on their behalf. Students come to this school every day to get, uh, actually, first, fourth, I'd like to speak on the issue that I find pressing, the preposterous amount of flooding at Palmetto High School. From rain, students come to school every day to get an education. With all the challenges they face, the last thing they should be concerning themselves with is health hazardous conditions from a flood, that we should have more than enough resources to control it. According to Mayor Bryant, two years ago, the county set aside half a million dollars, and yet this issue has yet to be rectified. You have students who are, who we are putting at risk of a flesh-eating bacteria. I don't know if you guys have seen the photos, but it's pretty high water for them to be walking to class. This isn't the only school that this happens to, but these are the students that came forward and wanted to speak. This is only part of them that reached out, but their parents are concerned. Their parents state that this has been happening since they were in school. The furthest I could date back from the conversations I had was 95. So, 95 to 2019, and we still have the same issue. There's something wrong. Why it's not being addressed, why it's not being fixed, I don't know. It should not take two years for the district to properly analyze and rectify these dangerous conditions, especially with half a million dollars and more if we needed it. The county very well may be attempting some solutions, but with two years having passed, I feel the sense of urgency is poor. As usually, I like to keep track of this issue, I came across an article from ABC Seven News writing about the flood. Reading further, I saw the comment from a student, and I'm sure some of you guys saw that it was televised. And the student said, "It makes me wanna stay at home all the time, but you know, I've gotta get an education. I've gotta walk through these puddles of water to get to class. We can do better than this for our students, we need to do better than this. We owe it to them."
Thank you. Mr. Hacizinski, and then Mr. Gibalina.
Thank you, board members, good evening, honorable board members, Superintendent Saunders staff. My name is Ryan Hacizinski, I am a sixteen-year veteran teacher working in Hillsborough County Public Schools. I am a bit of a nerd, so I've taught a lot of different things, language arts, social studies, mathematics, been a new teacher mentor. I'm currently the theory of knowledge teacher and extended as a coordinator for the International Baccalaureate Program at Strawberry Crest High School. I also, when the Tallahassee cared about such things, I was a ninety-ninth percentile best-in-bogus scholar. I'm here tonight because I also do a bit of public education advocacy work with a side project called Teacher Voice, which is a blog and a podcast. You can find it www.teacher-voice.com. But more to the point, and to address what this previous gentleman just said, a lot of this boils down to numbers, does it not? Florida has a one trillion-dollar economy, with a T. We are the third-most populous state in the United States. We are the fourth-biggest economy in the U.S. We're the seventeenth-biggest economy in the world. And yet, we are forty-fifth in public education spending. We are forty-eighth in teacher pay. We are fiftieth, dead last, in the United States for inflation-adjusted spending since the end of the Great Recession. This is an abject moral failure. The Florida Legislature, as an institution, has failed us all. Make no mistake about it. Think about it as a parent. Many parents are in this room. Many of you may be parents and have children. I'm a bit of a Kantian, I think that we have a moral obligation to care for our children, do we not? Why does that not scale up to the state level? Why doesn't the state recognize the value in our children and their future? Why the lack of investment? These are deeply troubling questions that I hope you consider. I, for one, am over it. Enough is enough, I'm taking a stand, I'm taking a personal day on January fourteenth, 2020. I'm encouraging every teacher in the state of Florida to do the same. If you're watching at home, take January fourteenth, 2020 off, please. We need, more importantly, board member help. We need board members and superintendents to stand up together. Because this is far too important. Our children and their future deserve so much more. To be silent is to be complicit. I hope you will raise your voice with me. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Mr. Gibalina, come on down, and after Mr. Gibalina, Ms. Kness.
For the record, Glenn Gibalina, taxpayer and activist, tough act to follow, I gotta tell you. I don't know if you've been watching the news, but there's climate change going on. All over the country, students are revolting, closing down streets, so... I think it's imperative that, you know, we show our young students that we should be engaged with climate change as well. And one of those ways is renewable energy. I've been up here about five years asking about renewable energy. We have sixty-plus schools, and we don't have one solar panel on there. So, I have yet to be engaged with someone from the administration or the council to address this issue. I've yet to hear one solar company come in here and do a proposal. I've yet to hear from the building department why it's not cost-effective. You know why? Because you can't. It is cost-effective. You're sitting on fourteen, fifteen acres of brownfield over at Bay Shore. The county has a half a million dollars for brownfield cleanup. You could probably put on fifteen or sixteen thousand solar panels there. We need to do something better, and we need to send them, you know, just do a demonstration project. Go throw ten panels on the front of every school, and your response will be tenfold coming back. All those kids coming in seeing renewable energy, God, that's a great idea, has something to do with climate change. Our school district is stepping up to the plate. Even though it won't make much difference in your electric bill, it will be the perception that we wanna give to our students. And I sent you cutting-edge stuff from New Hampshire, schools all over the country that are putting them on rooftops, cost-effective, getting their money back, so... I really, really wanna address this issue, and I want some hard answers. And I'm gonna just touch on the impact fees, 'cause I understand we'll have a meeting down the road, but, you know, for years, you never collected any impact fees. So, when I'm asking for a reduction of impact fees for affordable housing, you need to take a look at it. Bring this up again, no sliding scale. This, whoever did this was either developer-backed, or they didn't know what they're doing. This is a terrible system. We should not be charged the same as a million-dollar house. So hopefully, we can hammer that out, there's ways around it. I've sent you all information about it. Best practices across the state, whoops, across the state. We can do a better job, you want affordable housing, you're gonna have to step up to the plate and give the small contractors a break, and hopefully, we can move in the right direction. We need it, and, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kness, and then Ms. Filesticker.
Chairman Minor, members of the board, Superintendent Saunders, thank you for the opportunity to address you once again. It was great to hear the reference that Chairman Minor mentioned about our Chamber of Commerce. They are an impressive group. They've been recognized nationally as the very best. And Jackie Dzelski, the president of the chamber, spent her childhood at the girls' club. And we're very proud of the leadership that she has demonstrated and the success that she has achieved. I wanted to follow up with you on our progress measures. We appreciate the opportunity that you gave us last time to shine a light on the accountability, the governance, the programs, the educational pieces, the character development, and the behavior modification that we're doing at Just for Girls. And tonight, I wanted to just wrap it all up by discussing the progress measures that we have measured to provide you with comparisons that are very meaningful. It's important that we don't measure the success of the child or the school on a test that occurs one day, especially when we have a very small school filled with students with variables in their lives, many of them having faced trauma and uncertainty and things that can happen that on testing day make it very difficult for them to perform well. We measure all year long, and year after year, we compare ourselves to ourselves, to other Title I schools and to the district. And in progress, we can show accelerated learning gains to recover the deficits from the students when they come to us so many years behind. If we only measure proficiency with this target population, it will be very difficult for us to compete with the same students that are gifted and average and have a more consistent lifestyle, books at home and computers at home. The resources at Just for Girls are less than other Title I schools within the district, and we appreciate your consideration of helping to level the playing field with what would have been the millage funding, and now looks like we're open to discussing the general revenue funding. Our number of students is small, our school is small, and the amount of money is very small compared to the size of the district's budget. And I wanna thank you for making it feel like it's still an extraordinarily important topic to all of you. You've given us a great deal of time and attention, and for that, we're very grateful. Although it's a small school with a population that's small in number, the value of your investment in the lives of these girls is beyond measure. Thank you again.
Ms. Filesticker? And after Ms. Sticker, John Sire?
Good evening. As most of you know me, I'm Jane Filesticker, and I spent a few years sitting on that side of the dais. I've also now retired and am pumping my energies into the governor's board for Just for Girls. And I wanted to speak to you about my experiences thus far working with Just for Girls. These young ladies represent an extremely vulnerable population. Many of these young ladies have endured hardships that we can't imagine, that we've only seen on, in the movies and typically horror movies. So, the service that Just for Girls provides to these young ladies is irreplaceable. They cannot receive this type of individualized attention under normal school circumstances, and they have not thrived. Typically, they come to Just for Girls after having a poor experience within a traditional school situation. And I do believe that when this county passed the most recent tax referendum, that everyone, including me, who voted for that, fully intended for that money to be distributed evenly amongst all of the teachers within the district. It never crossed my mind that there would be a small subset of teacher population who would be... of teacher population who would be winnowed out of the group of teachers who are receiving benefits from this. So, I very much thank you for considering an examination of this, uh, I think was probably just an oversight or hour that had occurred that left Just for Girls out of the funding from the tax referendum, allowing us to then provide the exact same salary to Just for Girls teachers as everyone else in the county receives. If these teachers are facing probably more challenges than teachers in traditional schools and charter schools, it really does not make sense at all to not provide them with the resources that they need to at least be paid at the equivalent level as to the other teachers. So once again, thank you so much for considering the requests that Just for Girls has placed forward to you. And I think you will be extremely pleased to see our young ladies as they move on and excel and moving into the general population when they get to high school. Thank you.
John? All right, and after, um, Mr. Sire, I hope I'm saying that right, will be Ms. Rhodes.
Thank you, board members. I'm John Sire, health teacher, King Middle School. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Stand program, which um, so confusedly got on the agenda earlier tonight, and you'll be discussing funding for a little bit later. I'm not quite sure that everybody is aware exactly what this program is. Uh, this program is not new. It's been going on for several years. Uh, the name of the program is new this year. It was formerly known as It's Your Choice. Now it is Students Against Negative Decisions. Uh, this program has been coming in from district personnel into my health classes at King Middle School for several years, sometimes PE classes. Uh, must be approved by the principal to come into your school, and we've been grateful that our principals, over the last several years, have allowed it at King. Um, the value of this program might not be one hundred percent measurable. This is a prevention-based program. It brings in all kinds of top different sensitive topics, difficult topics to our students, uh, talking about decisions they're gonna have to make in the future, or possibly will be faced with. Just last week, we had a hundred and fifty-eight students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade get certified in the Stop the Bleed program. That was wonderful. They did that in one day. But it took that district staff to come in and do that with the help of some outside organizations. There's lovely pictures on WeManatee that were just posted today, uh, the the website as well as the Facebook page. Just today, they talked about, um, the most current research and information in e-cigarettes and vaping, a growing epidemic here with our students within our schools. And this is information is firsthand. The research is flawless. Um, they're coming out every day adjusting their programs and what they talk about. They are experts in the topics. The teachers that teach the programs and facilitate, they're experts in the topics that they do. This is a prevention-focused program. The outside organizations that come in do not have effect on the cost that you guys are going to talk about later tonight. The cost is simply for the directors, the teachers that provide the instruction, uh, for the schools that provide it. Our legislator this year is requiring mental health education. We talk a lot about mental health education. We talk about it usually after something goes wrong, like a terrible tragedy. We talk about it and talk about it and talk about it. How much do we implement mental health education into our classes? I haven't seen much. I'm a health teacher, so we do that. Sold me two middle school health programs in our whole county, so it's not a required course. It's an elective. These directors and teachers have been using grant money for their supplies and instruction over the last several years, and that money is running out. The grant has expired, and that's why it's on the agenda tonight. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, uh, to talk about how we can continue this program by providing funding from the district. So I'm urging you to approve the budget tonight on our new business that you'll be discussing later for this program. And even possibly in the future, have a workshop to expand it. Thank you.
Ms. Rhodes, and after Ms. Rhodes will be Ms. Woodson.
One thing I'm gonna agree with what, uh, Mr. Golden, Reverend Golden say, you all have the net over north of the river. But this right here is going to Mr. Widener. Right here, 'cause he's supposed to be over bus transportation and everything. Our kids at LMA is not stepkids. They're supposed to get the same treatment as other kids riding that bus. The bus you gave, Lincoln, them three buses are surplus buses way back in the days. The buses are hot, the kids don't have no air conditioning, they break it down, and neither one of you members have came over to Lincoln to see about our kids across the river. And you is over bussing. Now, another thing I'm gonna tell you, I don't know about the information, but I have called up that a Karen Hines who is over charter schools here, so some information you all are giving is wrong. Now, July the twenty-third, y'all took our school without notice. Y'all didn't have it on the agenda, you put it on the agenda. But today, I was sitting in here about the lady, whoever y'all hiding, but I person, why y'all ain't put that on the agenda? I'm gonna tell you why. A lot of y'all are so jealous of this black man who is very smart, and y'all do anything to bring him down, but see, you all not thinking about the kids over there. And another thing, they supposed to have a recovery plan, but you all didn't give them a chance to do the recovery plan, just took it. Just took the school. Like y'all can just do anything you want north of the river, because it is in a black community, and it is a top-notch school. Y'all can't do that to us. And like I say, yeah, we waiting for September thirtieth, whichever way to go. I was sitting here. Yes, we win, we get our school back. If you all win, y'all talking the whole thing about this and that. No! We're not gonna have nobody come in, talk to us. You ain't come talk to us before, talking about to have a school there, or somebody could get the building. No. We're gonna keep our school. If we have to go further, and you know what further is, y'all can just breeze on it. We will go further with it, and we got the support. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Ms. Woodson? I know she spoke earlier. Okay, Mrs. Mendel, and after Mr. Mrs. Mendel will be Mr. Hunley. Come on down, Mrs. Mendel.
Hi, I'm he- I'm here to revisit the student progression plan. I'm sure you're thrilled, um, Reverend Golden. Uh, page fifty-seven on the new on the new student progression plan says, "A student must have a three-point-o grade point average and have earned a Level Three or higher on the FSA, passed a nationally norm-standardized test, or earned a required comparative concord score within the last two years to be eligible to participate, in IB, AP, or Cambridge ACE." It is a violation of the statute, which is why we've changed that two previous years before this one. Under Statute one zero zero two point two oh, Part Six Educational Choice, it says, "Public educational school choices. Parents of public school students may seek any educational school choice options that are applicable to and and available to students throughout the state. These options may include," and they go through quite a few, but right here is advanced placement, international baccalaureate, international general certificate of secondary education, which is pre-Ace, and a- advanced international certificate of education. Um, it's a, and it, the key operative word here is "parents of public school students may seek these options." This is the school choice that school choice activists throughout the state rally for. It's why we have charters. It's why we are going to be spending billions on vouchers. This is a school choice issue. Sarasota County doesn't require a test score. ACE, international program, and IB are specific in their literature that they provide to families, and it says, "A test score is not needed." But, and and the AB or the IP, uh, program over at Southeast, the parent information session was, "Don't worry if your child doesn't have a passing test score or a test score at all, because you don't need one to be in our programs." So you have your principals sending out one message, you've got the statute with the sec- this the same message, and y'all are just kinda making up your own stuff to put in the student progression plan. Two previous years, we did not have this. And suddenly, out of the blue, it's VAM, and, um, oh, and homeschoolers have to have test scores too. That's another thing. Homeschoolers don't have to have any test score to take any of these advanced classes when they come in. Talk to their homeschool lawyer they have up in in Tallahassee. They have a powerful legal team behind them. So I don't know why we just can't change it like we did for the last two previous years, that we have to revisit this. Parents don't care about VAM. The legislature doesn't care about VAM. If this is a school choice issue, you don't need a test score to take IB, um, AP, or ACE. Please change it. Thank you.
Mr. Hunley, and after Mr. Hunley will be Reverend Mason.
Good evening, board members, Attorney, uh, Di, Superintendent, and everybody here. It's tough to come up here. I've stayed away, and, um, although impulse would have me come here and refute all the wonderful things that have been said, I don't have to do that. That stuff will take care of itself. But what I wanna do is make sure you don't move forward not understanding the impact of what's taking place. I wanna start, uh, the same way I'm gonna finish. I was home listening to the workshop and had to drive up, because I heard repeatedly there will be a charter school. That community and those kids don't want a charter school. They want their charter school. If they wanted a charter school, they would go to one of the four charter schools that are within a four-mile radius of Lincoln. So let's not discount the process that only twenty, twenty-two other uh, schools have done in the in the state of Florida to go through that conversion process. They knew what they wanted. They went through the process, and they obtained it. So I'm here on behalf of these kids. This is this is not okay, and I wanna make sure this board, if you're gonna do it, do it, and it's deliberate, we won't do it behind the mask of of suggested suggested words. The, uh, the continued underestimating of what was in place has to stop. Mr. Kennedy has been to the school on a number of occasions. Ms. Yost, nice to meet you. She she hasn't had the opportunity, but no one else, uh, Ms. Messenger came to a meeting at night, but no one else was ever in attendance at Lincoln Memorial Academy, including the superintendent, during a school day to see the difference. So it's very difficult to say what's better when you don't know what was. So when we talk about these this this well-crafted slideshow with empty words like estimated one point five, well, when the truth comes out, it's an out, 'cause you said estimated. Or, even better, intent. We're two months in, and there's gonna be a decision in a few days that's gonna change people's lives, not just upset some people, change their lives, and we're talking about intent. Mr. Di is a capable attorney. So if there was an avenue for you to just go do those things, we wouldn't be talking about intent. We would be talking about what we were gonna specifically do, and we can't. So I wanna go on record as saying, there is no scenario where this is a win. Because we get the school back, we have to undo everything that's been done for the last two months, because the school has not been run as a charter. It's been dismantled. If you all prevail, there is no scenario where Lincoln Memorial Academy exists. It's done. The kids, the school's dissolved. If you have some kind of school ID number sitting on a shelf that you're gonna throw in that building, it'll become a public school, which then means public schools, unless you have some magic statutory, uh, passes, would have to go through another conversion, because it would be another public school. That that doesn't have to happen. So there's only there's only three scenarios that come down. You prevail, LMA's gone, and there's the suggestion of another school that you could charge to use the building and charge, charge, charge. We get the school back and try to rebuild and regain the momentum. Or, the step that's been completely ignored is the two sides sitting down, and 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 I believe Reverend Golden told me once, I want, I don't want anybody coming in and controlling. We can wait for this law judge, or we could have sat down and said, "What is it you want?" Even if that's me out, what is it you want? Because what those kids should have is greater than all of that. So I'm going on record saying, we were not asked what our plan was. We have not been invited to entertain a settlement. We have provided you with options, including supporters that have, uh, promised a million dollars to keep the school straight. And I said all of this without even, without addressing the countless things that are being said and done to and about me. It's not about that. So if the intent is to help the kids, it can't be based on what's happened so far, because the the vast majority of you have not even been to the school to see the kids. But we can still help the kids now. And if this doesn't go well, it won't be because you you all didn't know. Florida statute does not allow for you to continue running LMA, and if you have the power to take a public school and just proof it into a charter, then that remains to be seen. Thank you.
Reverend Mason? And after Reverend will be Veronica Rodriguez.
Good evening to each and every one of you in your respective places. I come to, uh, represent the Lincoln Memorial Academy. I'm an aged man now from, uh, a county called Marion County. I graduated from North Marion High School in nineteen seventy-five. That culture has been suppressed in that area for long as I've been alive. So to come here and watch suppression again from leaders that I know that come from a culture that has always suppressed is very disturbing to me. Uh, to say that you care about the kids at Lincoln Memorial Academy and excommunicate and ex- a a number amount of children and not only uh, be moved from a position, but be enhanced to, uh, be glorified is disturbing to a person that calls themselves a leader. I, uh, am very disturbed in looking at a board that always take a black man and think that when he speaks, there's an argument, or there's frustration, or there is some type of threat. We too are people. We too come to have rights. Our children have rights. I don't think that there's no one, except a couple of you, that may be interested in the children at LMA. I do think that there are some financial benefits there. Having said that, as an august body with a head that's less than the head that I serve, I think that you should reconsider your emotions, stop going after, uh, certain individuals, sit down like adults if you care about the children, because you don't care about the children. Because if you cared about the children, you would come see about the children. Who in here has saw about our children? How can you raise my child when you don't know what goes on in my household? I don't try to raise your children. So stop trying to raise my children. Every child is not going to college. So having a total life prep concept prepares a child for what's in the future. Think about what you're doing. You said, "In God we trust." That's what you say on your dollar. And then you say, "In liberty." You pledge to a flag. Have no significance to anything we do.
Thank you. Veronica Rodriguez, and then Edmundo, Edmundo Jardine Cruz.
Good evening. My first comment is that you should change the pictures that you have on the wall behind you. Or maybe you should just be more specific of which students deserve the arts. The arts are taken away from our students, so more remediation class can be added to their schedule. Four years ago, there was no art class at Lincoln Memorial Middle School, a district school. As the school improved under leadership at a time, and I'll recognize as Mr. Eric Hunley, Lincoln students were able to grow and learn from it. The music program was falling apart, but the, under the same really leadership, they were able to take their orchestra to perform They were able to take their orchestra to perform at Disney Springs. You're probably too busy to find out. Or maybe you're just too busy honoring outstanding and innovating. Black members of a community that you are careless about it. Or you can ask Board Member Kennedy if he enjoy being part of Lincoln Got Talent. That showcase the students. You should have followed his example. Under the same leadership, Lincoln added chorus, drum line and dance. At this moment, Lincoln Memorial Academy has no music program. Did you know that for many of our students, the arts is what will keep them engaged in education? My daughter, who is a member of Palmetto High School marching band by choice, we probably homeschool. I tired of hearing from students, why don't you go to another program? She couldn't be going to a better music program across the river. I tell her, you can make a difference where you're at. Reality is, should an equal opportunities be offered to all Manatee County students? Are the students across the river just more talent or the resources are not equally divided? Palmetto High School has an amazing band director has been trying to grow the program under extremely tight budget. And since we are talking about Palmetto High School, it's a shame to see the school walkways flooded after less than ten minutes of rain. Don't blame the city. Find solutions and get it done. But why should we care now? Raining season is almost over, right? We'll revisit next year if someone complains. Meanwhile, a community students are forgotten. The next comment that I have is about human resources that was on the agenda. And I'm wondering why there was name of employees that was listed as termination. But there was no names for appointments at administration. Mister King, Ms. Prue, nor Mister Clark names are under for the AJR. Also, we have certified, not certified teachers that are teaching core classes. Don't mislead our community. You don't seem to care too much about a.
Edmundo. And then Mister Motkowitz.
Hi, uh my name's Edmundo Jardines. Uh I uh when I was a young kid, when I first got here to the US. First school I went to was Tillman Elementary. I still remember my teachers, Ms. Kirby. My E and Mister Leaks. And from what they they were, from what they taught me is to stand up for everybody else, especially Ms. Kirby. She had a little paddle and she's like, if you if if you're not paying attention in school, you know, you're gonna see the paddle. Anyways. I go, I went to Lincoln Middle. I remember in the early two thousands when it was a magnet school. I remember there was music. I remember we had a technology class. I remember we had an agriculture class. I remember everybody was happy. The county had money. Everybody was happy. My family moves out from the county. We come back. And now I'm seeing this mess that everybody's created. There's no music, there's no art. You know, every 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 time I'm I'm hearing from the community that uh. The the districts has to be run like a business. If it has to be run like a business, then we are the shareholders. You guys are the. Executives. If you guys can't do anything for us, then you guys need to get out. If it's too hot in the kitchen, get out. That's it. You know, I am tired of listening to all these kids. I am tired of you guys finding excuses. To try to try, you know, whatever you try to manipulate with whatever words you can, you know, to the community. I am tired of it. If you guys can't handle it, find a different job. That's it. You know, at my job, I I have to take care of machines. I have to check. You know, nothing goes wrong with them cuz there's somebody driving it, someone using that machine. And if something were to happen to them, it would be on me. So it's you guys. You guys are the mechanics for all these kids. You guys have the kids' future in the palm of your hands. And if you guys can't do it, then find, go somewhere else. I'm 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 tired of it. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of seeing all the kids unhappy. I'm tired that. They don't have any arts. They have no music, you know. I'm done. I I went to Lincoln. I went to their to their agriculture program. I enjoyed growing the sunflowers. I learned about agriculture there. You know, I went to their ar- art art classes. I went to their technology and I was happy there. And from there, I understood the world a lot better. How come we're not giving the these opportunity to the new kids?
Thank you. Mister Motkowitz. And after Mister Motkowitz will be Ms. Parm.
Good evening. I come here today to talk about supplements. I know that it's been an issue that's been brought up in the recent past. Um it's an issue that's I've been talking about for years and every time I ask about it, when I ask, how do we change it? Somebody says, well. Management has to propose it. Other times it's if I talk to management, they say the union has to propose it. All I know is nothing's getting done. And my understanding is, I'm not sure of the exact number, but these supplements have not been changed, I believe, in over fifteen years. So they've not been adjusted for inflation or any additional duties. So um I know we're in the process of trying to address that issue and what I have here for you. Is language from the New York City Teachers Contract. It addresses supplements and it talks about, it addresses it as per session teachers. What it talks about is um. It sets a number of sessions for P each activity. So if you're talking about football, it says. This is a session for a football game. This is a session for practices. And then they negotiate a contract price for those sessions. And what is good about this system is if we add something to the schedule. If we were to increase the number of middle school games, you would automatically just change the number of sessions. You would agree on the current price for that session for the new year and it basically would automatically adjust without saying. Okay, it's three thousand dollars for being whatever. Right now you have people who are like athletic directors in the middle school whose um. Duties and responsibilities have increased vastly. And they're actually working as like trainers for all the home games in the middle schools. And they're making less money on all the coaches who are at those games. And I think it's important because uh right now you have a lot of dedicated people who wanna do those jobs and they wanna work with those kids. But then they're looking and they're saying, hey, you know, I I I don't need to bank a lot of money off this, but I need the money. And if I can't get a reasonable amount, then I need to stop doing this and leave and go get a job where I can make some money. Some people I've I I they're they're down to making like two dollars an hour. And that's just not fair. We don't adjust it for inflation. We don't adjust it for hours. And all I'm asking is that you look at this. Look at this system, this formula, the way it works and consider this as we go forward in negotiations. Thank you.
Ms. Parm. And after Ms. Parm, Rodney.
Good evening, everyone. I would first like to begin with progress reports. So as I've heard, um progress reports have already been sent out. And there are names of teachers that are on the progress reports that are not. Working there at this time, which happens to be very misleading to the parents in the community. Next, I would like to speak on something that was spoken about in the. The me, the board. The workshop and it was on talking about money. I'm try, I'm not trying to call anybody out on anything or anything like that, but it was said that I guess people or you're getting tired of. Um the public or the community um saying that basically. Things were done because of things that you didn't do. Okay, so I wish any, if not all of you could have been. At at least one of the hearings, but let me tell you what I heard at the hearing. Um it was a question asked about the finances of the school. And if it was known, because it was known before school started. That the money that was supposed to be, well, that was. That they thought they were going to get, they weren't going to be able to get that. That was known before school started, but it wasn't given, they weren't given that information until later on, right before school started. Anyway, money spent, whatever. So it was asked, the question was asked, is there any money from anywhere else that the school board could have come up with? And um I think I believe her name is Ms. Garcia. Um she sat up on a chair, you know, with her chest back, her light all stern and everything. Absolutely not. There was no money. Asked again, asked several times as a matter of fact. No money anywhere. Even when told that someone from the board. Let it be known that there was money, she still said there was never any money. But, you know, just speaking and speaking and speaking, you know, sometime you talk, you talk yourself in a circle and you. Come back to that answer to that question with the answer that you didn't wanna give. So I'm gonna go, it reminded me of the movie A Few Good Men. When um Jack Nichols sat up and he said, you want the truth? You can't handle the truth. So basically, the money that she said was never there, she said was there. And when it was asked.
Thank you. Rodney and after Rodney, Mister Romanoff.
Hey, greetings. Uh Rodney Jones, um parent, um and community member. Um I just wanted to relay, um you know, I'm not sure how everyone takes my posture, but you know, I'm a graduate of of this district. Uh so is my brother, my sister. My mom taught here thirty-three years. I have a uh I'm I'm from a family of educators. My cousin has areas over the language department at State College of Florida. Uh we we value education. Education has meant a gateway into a better life for my family and for my neighbors. So when I'm here, I'm always speaking from that context. And I just think this board and this current regime is really bad for our district. I think it's one of the worst regimes that we've seen and I've been involved with the school board for a long time, for almost thirty years now. Uh served as president of several SACS. I've I've been on strategic planning team, the old advantage core team. I sat on the citizen budget advisory committee. I I was part of the strategic planning team last time. I started the district's first cultural competence and linguistics committee. Uh so I've been invested and what you've done here is wrong. Um and and it's dead wrong. It it's actually uh depicts a failure. Of you to understand the different cultures that are here and that's a failure to you to address cultural competence over the years. Now this change is upon you. And these very dynamic environments are upon you and you're not equipped to get the job done. And it's evidenced by what happened at Lincoln. I'll go to the point, the point is you've created, if anyone has hurt the safety and well-being and health of those children you have. Misanders under your leadership. And we won't let it go. So regardless of how this hearing goes, we we will not let it go until you are out of this district, ma'am. I'll tell you that clearly and plainly till you are gone. And once she goes, the whole thing starts to fall. But you you're first. You need to, you you're not worthy to be here. You have caused a catastrophic uh situation at that that school where those kids' safety is now in danger. I keep getting up here talking to you about it. Reverend Golden, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You're on the board of center stone and have been with Manatee Glens for a long time. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. You haven't asked any questions. Nobody orders any kind of investigation or anything that has happened at that school. And you ought to be ashamed of yourself and every last one of you are gonna pay for it one by one. The the situation is dangerous. There's a record violence at the school. They've had more physical alter- altercations in the first four weeks of schools than they did entire last year. We now have a parent that's willing to come forward to say that her daughter who has an IAP and has a diagnosed mental health issue. Had to be Baker acted one year, for the first time in her life, had to be Baker acted after school because of the trauma that she experienced at the school. We haven't heard any reports. We haven't heard the board ask like any questions, but you guys can ask questions about everything else that's not essential. You can talk about money till you're blue in the face, but our kids aren't important to you. So you know what? They said you hope you'd come to the table. I hope you don't. I hope God hardens your heart and you keep just doing what you're doing. And just like when he had his people backed up to the Red Seas, now open that Red Sea and we're gonna go through. And when you come through, you're gonna lose everything you thought you had. And I'm praying for it.
Mister Romanoff and after Mister Romanoff, Mister Stevens.
Good evening to you all. Thank you. Uh I represent uh Teen Aircraft Factory of Minnesota. And uh I'm here to show some support for a new program that we understand that you're considering. Uh an aircraft, airframe and power plant program to be a part of Manatee Technical College. And uh I brought a few people. I'm sorry. Come on up here. Gather around if you don't mind. But we'd like to offer our support for this program. Uh we have young people involved from the community. With an interest in aviation and we're building airplanes that they can then fly once they're completed. Uh those that want to have an opportunity and a path into getting their pilot's license uh as a result of that. Um we're involved with the Experimental Aircraft Association, uh Chapter one eighty. Uh we operate with the Young Eagles Program as well as a recruiting source. But also our students coming through our program will have some experience and the interest. To participate in your uh A and P program as that goes forward. So we just all came to show our support and goodwill towards what you're contemplating. And hope that you will approve uh this and go forward with the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Stevens.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Uh my name is Gary Stevens. I'm the president of Experimental Aircraft Association one eighty. But I'm also here representing the Civil Air Patrol, which is auxiliary of the US Air Force. I'm a major and an instructor pilot in that. Organization as well. Uh the one thing that we have in common is working with kids. Uh I'll start with our Civil Air Patrol Squadron. We are a composite squadron. And uh we have youth um from thirteen through eighteen. We've had several of our cadets have gone on to the US Military Academies. And uh next week I'm going to be visiting a senior uh at the Air Force Academy who was one of our cadets. It's a great honor to be able to do that. The Civil Air Patrol gives orientation rides and we're steeped in aviation education with our cadets. And we have a dedicated group of volunteers. We're all volunteers in our senior staff. Experimental Aircraft Association one eighty, uh we're very involved with youth in our Young Eagles Program where we as pilots. I'm an aircraft owner and uh I volunteer my time, my expense of fuel, the use of my airplane. To expose young people to aviation. The the thing that I think we have all in common with the EAA as well as the Civil Air Patrol and the uh Teen Build Program is. That that many of us, I I'm a retired aviation professional. Um we we have a tremendous amount of resources and and knowledge, uh skills. That we could pass on to young people. And through the programs that we're doing, the proposal for the. Uh Technical College to have a facility at the airport is ideal. Because many of these kids who we've inspired through the years have gone on to aviation schools, but none of them have been locally. And prior to being in aviation, I came out of the Chamber of Commerce background, so I do understand uh the power of the local economy. So I I think the the synergy that we could bring as three distinct organizations who work with kids. And the experience that we have among our adults and obviously potential students. Would would make your proposal at the Sarasota Airport a a very good proposal and one that. We are willing and committed to work with you to make sure it succeeds. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, earlier I called Ms. Woodson, and I see that you're back, would you like to come up and speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Margie G. Woodson. I was here today at the workshop. And I was very disappointed about several things that happened, I want to speak on them tonight. First of all, when Mr. Dr. Pastella was given the pros and cons of if Lincoln stays or Lincoln goes, it seems to me that Chairman Goldman was only interested in the 1.5 million dollars to see who had to pay that. He didn't want it to come from the school board's money. Then I heard Reverend Golden say something, it was very good, he said Lincoln has always been sort of like a drop-off school. We got the less books, we got the less material, we got the less, less, less. And I said, wow, Chairman Goldman got it. He no got Chairman Golden, I'm sorry, Board Member Golden, he has it now. He knows that Lincoln has struggled for so, 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 so many years. And then, I heard him say, so in essence, these aren't his words, but in essence, why are you doing something about it now? Lincoln has always been the drop-off school. These aren't his words, but that's the way I conceived it. And then, I thought, now Chair, Board Member Golden knows, in nineteen sixty-nine when things happened, we didn't know what to do. We would have done something then, but we took what was issued to us and we went on with that. And so I know that Board Member Golden knows, if we knew to do something, then we would have done it. That's why we're doing something now, because we're not pleased with what's going on. Then I heard Board Member Kennedy. But what he said, this fell on deaf ears, it was as if they didn't want to hear what he had to say. When he talked about how the school board helped MSA, how they helped a couple of the schools that were in trouble and gave them money. And he didn't say this, but I took it, that he meant, why can't you give Lincoln that money? So it appeared to me that the school board really doesn't care about the children at LMA with the total prep plan for the kids to learn, so they can go to school and, and be productive on what they can be, not what somebody wants them to be. And it bothered me, that money was so much of the issue that was concerning everybody, and not the school, not the children, not the neighborhood. It bothered me that people who have one time and one place, been in the community too. And it's like you've forgotten where you came from, it's where you are today. So now you don't have to worry about where you used to be. Where you used to be is where you are today, and caring is one thing that's lacking, and I just want to say that.
Thank you, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Chair Messenger. Okay, the next, thought we had approved the minutes, but I'm wrong. Okay, does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning the approval of minutes?
Yes, sir, I recommend the approval of the minutes from September tenth, twenty nineteen workshop, in shade meeting and regular meeting and public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the superintendent's recommendation has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? The chair hearing none, the chair calls the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicate nay. Hearing none, this passes unanimously five zero. Now, the next item on our agenda is the consent items. And is, does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval of the consent agenda for September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, to approve the superintendent's recommendation of the consent agenda. Call a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay, nay, it passes four one. The next item on the agenda is new business discussion, items pulled, pulled from consent, and I think we had, let's see, one item added to that, and well, the first one is, does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning approval of school capacity program?
Yes, I recommend approval of the school capacity program.
Okay, is there a second?
Um, so moved.
Okay, okay, it's been moved for approval of the superintendent's recommendation by Vice Chair Messenger. It's been seconded by Board Member Kennedy. All those in favor, please signify by saying what?
It was pulled from consent for discussion, can we have discussion?
I apologize, okay, let's discuss it, the board, the chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
Right, I had this one and the next one pulled, purely because the documents that are required for these two items are not there. And I was looking for the district to explain to the board and the public why those documents are not there.
Okay, now this, this is a matter concerning the school capacity program?
Yes.
Okay, would the superintendent would like to address the concerns that the vice chair has raised?
Sure, I'm gonna ask our CFO, Heather Jenkins, to respond to that comment.
The website opened to complete the school capacity plan on August thirtieth, but the DOE is having some technical difficulties, so the school, the five-year work plan website is not open, and what happens when it opens up is we have to download all the projects, and we have to assign budget to each area, and then we resubmit the plan. We contacted DOE to ask for an extension, because by statute, you have to submit your plan to the board and then submit it to DOE by October first. They will not grant an extension, we did receive a response that stated they wouldn't review any work plans until the districts had had the ability to complete them. So what we're doing is we're bringing this to the board, so that you're aware of that requirement, aware that we have not completed the work plan due to that date. So that we will, as soon as it is complete, of course, we will give it to you and present it to the board for review, but this is more of a statutory requirement for us to be in compliance.
Okay, Board Member, Vice Chair Messenger.
If they do grant an extension, will this come back before us so that we can see it and approve it?
Yes, it will come back before you regardless, we'll bring it back to you.
Well, I would expect to see it no matter what, but I'm just asking that it can come back before us for approval, if the extension is-
Yes, they, they have stated they will not grant an extension, we're still hopeful. But once the site opens back up, we'll complete the plan. The other option would be if it opened before October first to hold a, a special meeting, but it was supposed to open a week ago, and then a week and a half ago, and we're waiting.
Okay, Superintendent, and then Board Member Hope.
Once we got the feedback from them that they would not extend, and it's a statutory requirement, I felt it was important that we brought it before the board on the record, so it would be in our minutes that we tried to comply. Maybe what we can do is table it and state for the record due to the fact that we don't have all the items necessary per the DOE website. I just wanted to make sure that our district was in compliance with the statutory deadlines, although we do not have all the, all the documents that normally we would. So even, even if we go for the record, maybe in table till it's completed, due to the website not being open, might be sufficient. We just felt like we needed to make sure that we placed it for public and for, for the record.
Okay, Board Member Hope, and then Board Member Golden.
And perhaps, Mr. Chairman, maybe a question for both the district council and the board council. Is there a way, is there a way for us to approve, is there a way for us to approve this without a meeting? I mean, is there a way to structure a motion such that the superintendent gets our individual sign-off once all the documentation is complete? Because we're sort of being asked to approve something that's not complete, which I don't think that's good practice. I understand the timing and the dilemma, but I, I, I don't, I don't see how we can approve something without it coming before us in a form that requires our approval to be sent to Tallahassee. Is that clear? I, I think we have to table it, the question is, how do we, do we table it? I mean, I, I guess I move to table this item until the superintendent is prepared to bring it to us in a final form for approval.
Second that.
Okay, there, I, I understand that Board Member Hope is making a motion to amend the motion that's on the, on the table, okay?
Make a motion to table it.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking for a little technical help from board council. We had a motion that was seconded to approve this agenda item. Through discussion, it came about that, of, of feeling that it would be better to table, you know, this, this matter that's been motioned and seconded. Would it be better to have that motion and second withdrawn? And then go on with a motion to table the matter?
What, Mr. Chairman, what, what Mr. Dr. Hope's motion does is stops all discussion on the item until the condition that he has attached to his motion is fulfilled, and then it brings it back to you.
Okay, so, in, in the, in a form that's already been moved and seconded?
Correct, it brings, it brings the motion that was made before Dr. Hope made his motion, brings it back to you as a business item.
Okay, that's been moved, moved and seconded, and I guess we could resume discussion at that point, too. Okay, the, all right, we have a motion made by Board Member Hope, which I believe was seconded by Board Member Kennedy, okay, to table this. Now, that sounds like something we need to, do we discuss that? Do we discuss a motion to table?
It can be discussed.
Okay, the chair recognizes Board Member Golden.
Ms. Jenkins, you stated that October first is the deadline for submission of this school capacity report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you stated that you do not have the necessary material to complete that report, because the material that you need is not available from the state?
Yes.
Okay, how long will it take you to complete the report after you get that material from the state?
Approximately three days to a week.
Approximately three days to a week, okay. The day being the twenty-fourth, if you do not get the material by the twenty-seventh, you cannot meet the deadline of the, of the report being due on the first of October. That's, that's your statement today?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, do you have any idea, as you sit here tonight, how long it will take them to get the, get the program?
Sign open, no, certainly not.
They didn't give you any indication about that?
No, they basically stated that it was an abnormal year and that they were having technical difficulties, and that they would have it open as soon as possible.
So all you got was as soon as possible?
Yes.
Okay, Superintendent?
When I was at the FAD conference, Ms. Jenkins had brought that item up, so we brought it up to the commissioner. Many of the superintendents reiterated the importance of the deadline and asked that they extend it, and they could not give us a timeline of when it would be rectified and open. And they said, due to statutory language, they didn't have the liberty to change the deadline, even though there's no way anyone in the audience could comply with the deadline, because without that site being open, you can't produce the document requested.
Okay, any other further discussion? On Mr. Hope's is motion seconded by Mr. Kennedy to table this matter. If there's no further discussion, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the, Mr. Hope's motion passes unanimously five zero. Okay. I guess we're at approval of appointments and resignations. Correct me if I'm wrong, where are we?
Still new business pulled from consent.
Okay.
Appropriate District Educational Facilities Plan.
Okay, approval of the tenant, does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning approval of the Tenney District Educational Facilities Plan?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the Tenney District Educational Facilities Plan.
Okay, is there a motion to approve it? Made by Vice Chair Messenger, seconded by Board Member Kennedy, is there discussion?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
I asked this one to be pulled for the exact same reason, the documentation that's there is missing, so I'd like to make a motion that we table this, just like the previous one.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Messenger to, to table the superintendent's recommendation, it has been seconded by Board Member Hope, is there discussion?
I have one question.
Okay, we have discussion.
So that, now that this is being tabled, I'm assuming then we'd need to have some other special meeting prior to this date in order to approve it? Is that what, what I'm understanding? Or whenever this thing opens and they decide, and, I mean, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand-
Chair miner?
Yes, Superintendent.
I think it depends on when it does open. It could very well be, it falls in line with our next scheduled board meeting. If for some reason it does come up before, we will request to have a special meeting to get it. I'm sure once it does come live, the site is live, we will ask if our scheduled meeting will be sufficient. We, at least for the record, having the minutes that we tried to comply was statute, so that for auditing purposes or so forth, we have it documented.
Okay.
But that's not what we have in the minutes. What we have in the minutes are two items that were set for consent that were pulled at the request of one member who saw that all of the paperwork necessary to support this was not there. Now, we as a policymaking body are complicit in tabling something that never should have been on the agenda. Because I don't, I don't understand how, how, how we could have an item set for consent when everything that is necessary for that consent to be given is not a part of the record.
Okay, the board, the chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
My understanding, and this is just my understanding, so don't correct me if I'm wrong, but when I asked to have these pulled, my understanding was that it was put there in hopes that the window would open. So I kind of waited and waited, because like I look at the agenda before it's published, I look at the agenda after it's published, I look at the agenda like, I don't know how many times, a bunch of times, because, you know, things change and you'll notice new nuances, and I, I don't know. So I, I, I kind of waited, I waited and I waited, and then I was like, well, what's up with this? And basically, I was told, well, they put it on there hoping that they could get it done. So, I think, I don't think that was any effort other than pure optimism.
I agree, and all I'm saying is that until the 27th, we won't know whether that optimism was misplaced. That's all I'm saying. And if, in that case, we can, we can have a call meeting to table it then, because it's impossible for us to meet the conditions that we're supposed to meet. Right now, what we've heard is their website is down. And those of us who are attorneys, when something happens like that, it's always extended, so I'm really amazed at why it's not extended.
Because it's in statute, they could not give us a different date. I don't know. We've tried, we tried to get it in writing, we've, yeah, so.
Is there any further discussion?
No, no.
Okay, the Chair will call the question to approve the motion to table until we hear from the Superintendent that we're ready to go and Tallahassee's open for business. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries five, zero. Okay. Now, we got another item, is this? Did Mr. Kennedy have an item that is number three? Okay, number three on new business items pulled from consent. And Mr. Kennedy, can you?
I've got it written.
Well, okay, would you, would the Superintendent read that item that you understand was?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The item would be, I'm recommending approval of the use of Hillsborough County Public Schools bid on studio equipment, purchase, install, repair, and parts, SDMC number 19-0078-kd-revision, an additional $200,000, not to exceed $600,000 a year.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, is there discussion?
What was the recommendation?
Well, she, her recommendation is to approve what was item number five on the consent agenda, which was pulled from number five on the consent agenda and made number three under new business discussion items pulled from consent.
Are you asking us to free up $200,000 on that?
No, she did.
And then, I think he's going to discuss it.
Okay, we're in discussion, and the, okay, who made the motion to approve?
I made the motion.
Okay, okay, Board Member Hope's, it's your ball to roll with.
Thank you. I believe that the, that the executive summary is self-explanatory, that there is a need because of the ongoing projects for the renovations to the high school TV studios, that an additional $200,000 is needed to complete that, and therefore, I support the Superintendent's motion to increase the budget in the amount of $200,000 for the total amount for the program to improve our high school TV studios to not exceed $600,000 this year.
Okay.
And to utilize the Hillsborough County contract for the purposes of purchasing that equipment and installation.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Chair recognizes Board Member Kennedy.
This is slightly out of order, but this is, as I said earlier, this item is where I was looking to capture the funding for the stand item that we're going to discuss in a little bit. So, what I did is, instead of coming to you all with my hand out and saying, give me $221,000 for this program that will be going into its 10th year, has been proven effective, and is doing some really good stuff, but I'll talk about that in a few minutes. So, this was my place where we could find the funds to finance stand for this academic year. So, the reason I chose this is because, number one, it's a budget revision, so I was thinking to myself, perhaps these TV production facilities could get through this school year. They've already got, 400 has already been allocated for this purpose, maybe we could use this 200 to finance stand. In conversation with the Superintendent, and by the way, I do want to clear something up real quick from the beginning. I, to be clear, I did not mean to insinuate that, I submitted both of these last week. I did submit the stand item last week, it didn't make it to the agenda, but upon consideration over the weekend, I was like, I really need to go find money to pay for this, I can't just go ask for new money, and so that's where that came from today. So, everything the Superintendent said earlier when we approved of the agenda is exactly right, this came today. The moving of this item came today. That said, so, when I talked to the Superintendent, she did point out a relevant point to me, and I'll kick it back to her in a second if I can, Mr. Chair. But some of this funding you'll see in the item that has not been moved for approval and seconded, it involves internal accounts money. So, obviously, that's a little bit of a red flag, I don't want to pull any internal accounts money from a school that has fundraised for their own purposes. So, Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me, the Superintendent could address other funding possibilities or grants, or, I guess we should do that when we get to the stand item. We'll probably be...
Yeah, because her, I thought her recommendation was to approve the money where it is and for the purpose that it is there.
Yeah, that's what I just...
Oh, okay, that's what's confusing me.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You're up here opposing one of our board members here.
Sort of yes.
Sort of yes.
Again, I think because this was thought of today, Mr. Kennedy did not have time to discuss it, and I think he felt like if he came to the board with a proposal, he would have a better chance of it possibly passing, but because we didn't have time to have a conversation about it where we could come up with maybe a different plan, I think when it comes time, if the board chooses like anything that you want to pursue an item, then you need to just give us the direction of support of that item, and then I have to work with the CFO in terms of the budget to determine how to fund the item, and that's probably the most appropriate path of conversation.
Okay, the Chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
Only to add that, not only is it internal accounts, but I think quite a bit of this is millage money.
There's a whole bunch of, there's a whole bunch of funding sources.
You could spend that on this.
No, but grants and funding sources included in the school sites, departments' approved budgets, it could come from there.
It depends on what the grant is. I mean, if it's a technology grant or a career technical education grant, it can't.
Sure.
So, I just want to point that out.
Okay, is there any further?
I just wanted to reiterate that this is, this go, this is an expenditure that's going to carry these schools through a number of years, it's not a one-time, these are not general operational funds, and what you want to fund is really a program operationally per year, as opposed to equipment and installation into a facility that is going to serve these schools for kind of years to come, so, that was, that was the reason for supporting the motion, so that they can move forward with their project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Board Member Golden.
Call the question.
Okay, there's a motion to call the question, is there any further discussion? Okay, the question's been called, all those in favor of the motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, indicate nay. The Superintendent's, the motion to approve is Superintendent's, motion or recommendation is approved, five, zero. Okay, now, I think we're now in new business, non-consent items. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a Superintendent, number one, approval of new job description and position of student financials coordinator.
Yes, I recommend approval of the new job description and position of student financials coordinator.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope's to approve the Superintendent's recommendation. It was seconded by, looked like a tie over here, but...
I pushed the button first.
Okay, pushed the button. Vice Chair Messenger is seconded, is there discussion? The Chair hearing on, the Chair will call the question. The, all those in favor of approving the motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It covers, it carries unanimously five, zero. Next item on the agenda is approval of appointments and resignation of audit committee members. Is there a, we have to...
It's a more motion. Mr. Minor, I...
Okay.
Okay, it's a board.
Mr. Minor, I move for the approval of the appointments and resignations of the audit committee members, specifically the resignation of Mr. Rick Kimsey and the appointment of Mr. David Scoop and Ms. Marcia Salo to the audit committee. That is my motion.
Okay, it's a motion by Board Member Hope's and seconded by Board Member Kennedy to approve the Superintendent's recommendation, all those...
Audit committee's recommendation.
Well, it's the approval of appointments and resignations of audit committee members. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
There's discussion.
There's a discussion, okay, let's have discussion. Board Member Kennedy.
I just, since Mr. Kimsey is here, I want to thank him, he arrived at much fanfare and our Sammaset students singing to him, or so he thought. But it's, Mr. Kimsey, you've been, you've been on this committee since its inception, I believe.
Six years.
Six years, and I just wanted to take a second to thank you for that and wish you well.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
The, can you come down, Mr. Kimsey, can you come on down and, down front? And Mr. Barber's going to take a picture of this.
This is your one last opportunity to rescind your resignation.
It's my great honor and privilege, thank you so much. Appreciate very much. And we have this award in recognition of six years of torture. No, of service.
Did anything pass for me?
That as a member of the audit committee, in fact, as superintendent of school, and Dave White, our chairman, thank you so much. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Let me just go right there and...
Oh, we're doing a whole lot.
Everybody, okay?
Yeah, come on over here.
You may remember the cause of your former...
Standing ovation. You'll move over just a little bit this way.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, if I was you, I'd leave right now.
Mr. Cologne School, as I try to stand up, I'm broken down.
Well, we appreciate you, you contribute so much.
And I enjoyed working with each and every one of you, and the replacements, you'll find to be fantastic.
And he's right there, we'll have to get a picture of him in a moment. So...
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to really thank the audit committee because there were numerous qualified candidates that volunteered their service for us, and the two, the two people that we are about to appoint bring a really diverse experience to the committee, so I ask for your support.
Okay, well, thank you very much for those comments. I only heard great things about these nominees, and we're very fortunate to have such a diligent and qualified, you know, audit committee to help make this a great school district for public education, and that's what we've been doing. Okay, the, let's see, I think we go on to workshop items request, am I missing?
Those in favor, aye.
Okay, yeah, have we approved this? I thought we approved it.
No.
Okay.
We didn't vote yet, did we?
And that's a board action taken.
No Superintendent recommendation. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, I believe. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, it passes unanimously, five, zero. Okay, you're out of a job, okay. Well, don't say there isn't freedom in this world.
Is this the first time you had to have board approval to quit?
Okay, now we can get on to the exciting part, workshop item request.
Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, okay, I missed a page here, I guess.
He almost got away with it.
It was the pulled item, that would be a board...
Really? We need to talk about this, okay. Okay, this is the item that was added to the agenda, right? Okay, and this concerns stand, we had earlier comments from the community concerning stand, and I think that there's probably going to be someone on the board who's going to make a motion to approve this, and I'm looking at Mr. Kennedy, I think he's ready to do that.
I'd be happy to, I'd like to make a motion that we approve funding of $221,000 for the stand program for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Second.
Okay, discussion. I, this is my concern about program, there's nothing, you know, it certainly sounds wonderful. I know that the gentleman who made a recommendation, I praise him for his dedication to public education and for his woefully underpaid time being there at King Middle School, as I think you're still the athletic director, aren't you? No? You luckily got fired or something, okay, but, well, you got, but he's a great guy and he's a great singer and dancer, I've seen him on video supporting vote yes for the millage, I mean, what a kind of a great endorsement is that. My concern is this, the, I believe that, you know, this funds for this purpose, and I hope Mr. Kennedy will correct me if I'm wrong, were sought, you know, from Manatee County, and rightfully so, and from, and Manatee County said, nope, and I don't know why, but they did say, nope, and the, this is, you know, part of the funding, I believe, you know, that's earmarked, you know, by the voters, you know, for children's related, you know, education of things like this. That's my understanding of, you know, attempts to get funding. Now, Mr. Med, and they are set up, you know, to go through and, you know, vet these programs and decide whether or not they best serve, you know, our community. Now, I, I don't believe that we should ever be considered kind of the, I don't know, the, kind of the charitable outfit, if you can't get it anywhere, you get it from the, from the school board for funding, for wonderful founding, maybe wonderful programs, and we, as long as it's for kids. Now, we're all for kids, we're about serving, you know, helping the kids educationally, and I guess you can always make some kind of argument, well, anything that helps with kids, their health or anything like that might be for good education, but I think that's kind of a stretch, and that's why, you know, the idea of, you know, putting on the agenda, I didn't approve, and I think that there is value in the Chair of any, you know, school board having a role in whether or not it goes on the agenda or not. It's, I've heard disagreement with that, but that's, I think that most of the time and most school boards I know, they look to the Chair to bear that burden, and I understand where that burden comes, criticism, I accept that, but I don't think that it's... but, um, I, I don't think that it's, um, I don't look upon myself as a rubber stamp for every idea that might come, committee board member, uh, even though it's very well, you know, thought of, so, um, I don't think that, it, it hasn't been proven to me that, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of the public's money is best used to be approved tonight on this kind of notice, uh, for even this wealth, um, intentions, you know, you know, program. We haven't, uh, we haven't endorsed by good people, uh, in terms of background check, this district hasn't, um, uh, done it, I don't know, uh, does this require superintendent approval? I, I meant, okay, I'm, the answer is no, okay? And I, but is it improper for me to infer if the superintendent felt this was the best use of money for education, uh, the superintendent would have put on, put it on the agenda herself? And that wasn't done to my knowledge, uh, it's on here because a, a respected member of our, our board felt it would be, uh, appropriate, um, and we can all differ on that, but that's where I come from. Now, I think Mister Hope would like to address that question as well.
I'll, I'll be the doctor public health person on the board, um, you know, and this is out of fairness to Mister Kennedy, I mean, these, these, these are all great subject matters and topics that, that, that our young people, uh, need to be exposed to, um, you know, I'm gonna oppose approving this not based on the merits or the subject matter, but because as I, as I go through these topics, there are a number of, of state agencies that have responsibilities, I mean, like the AHEC program, uh, which in, in our region of the state, the, the AHEC program is run now at University of South Florida, which is part of the, the, the Health Education Department of Health, uh, covers a number of these subject areas. I think it's fantastic that we have programs like this in our school system, even if it's in a limited number of schools, I mean, I quite frankly think they need to be, you know, dispersed, um, but also as I, I look at the support partners, um, and, and consider the funding within those various partners who may be able to contribute to this funding if indeed this is the place for the program to be and to be funded, uh, I'm very familiar with Lake Medical Center's financials, uh, and I'm happy to go with you to talk with them about, you know, helping to support this program, to bridge it through whatever the SNAFU was in, in the other funding, and, and, and I'm willing to, to work with you and the, the, the program staff to look at other sources of funding that may, the district could do a Department of Health grant or, or something like that, but as I look, because, because the state has begun putting more money, um, into, uh, you know, mental health services, I, I think this is so broad and it covers so many areas of, of public health for adolescents that it's touching on a number of different, uh, organizations' area of, of contribution, and so, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to work with you on how this program gets, uh, coordinated with other district efforts, other Department of Health efforts, AHEC and the like, but I, I just at this time can't support approving it and committing the superintendent to figuring out a way to fund it. I would like to help figure out how to fund it, how to coordinate it with other programs, we give Centerstone like a million dollars or something like that, maybe they can contribute back towards it as well, so I would like to help you find another way to fund it other than putting it on the superintendent to figure it out, she's got enough on her plate, and I think I can connect you with people who may be able to assist. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you, board member Hope, uh, board member Golden.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The support partners that are listed here, do any of them have taxing authority?
That would be a no.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, what we're called upon here is, is, is a very fundamental, uh, consideration for us as a board, how do we best use, how do we use best the money that the taxpayers have already authorized us to use? It's, it's, it's that simple, and the reality is that in a county where teen pregnancy is one of the highest in the state, and a county where, uh, we have, uh, repeat teen births that exceed the national average, sexually transmitted diseases, where children are, you name the drugs, alcohol, e-cigarettes, the new vaping craze is coming on, um, you know, us looking for money, uh, that, 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 that has a nice sound to it, but none of these people have enough money. You talk to Doctor Benson from the Department of Health, they don't have enough money, and the million dollars that you think that we have at the Centerstone Corp, under vice chair of that board, we don't have enough money. None of us have enough money, and you're really in a bad way if you don't have the authority to raise money, or to generate money, or to create a, a, a cycle of income. So that, I know it makes your job harder, but that's why you get paid the big bucks, to figure out how to help the least of these, how to, how to deal with this, this is, this is just not words on a piece of paper, this, that man that stood there at night is asking you for children who can't help themselves, and, and, and these kind of children, uh, they don't, they don't work, they don't play well with others in, in regular schools, as it is, and now we have a chance to, to put somebody in those schools and to help some of them and to do something, I don't see how we can say no to two hundred, what, what's that budget, seven, some trillion dollars, well, it's not trillion, but it's, it's a lot of money. Yeah, almost eight hundred dollars, two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars is, um, is a small price to invest in, in this kind of a, this kind of a program. They want to serve all schools, mo, elementary, middle, high school, they want to, uh, they wanna do all, they wanna try to help all of our children be better off by taking the ones who come there high, or the ones who come there drugged, or the ones who come there from being sexually abused the night before, they're trying to help them, so I, I, I'm, I'm gonna support this, and I, I, I wish we had more money to support it.
Thank, thank you, board member, uh, Golden, the, uh...
Chair, can I address the motion that I made?
Yes, absolutely.
That'd be great, 'cause usually the person that makes the motion gets to address the motion, sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't.
I think board, I think board member Hope's made the motion to approve...
He just said he's not supporting this.
Well, I know, well, that's fine, but he made the motion and he says, um...
No, he didn't, Mister Chair.
Further, you're completely wrong, and...
That's Ian Golden.
And...
Okay, well, I apologize, then.
Further, if I may continue, um, I do want to respectfully disagree with you on the role of the chairman as the guardian of the agenda. As has already been stated, we are all equal members, and if a member asks well in advance of the meeting to place something on the agenda, no matter how bad an idea you think it is, we are all equal members here, and I would appreciate that respect if I submit something, whether it's the dumbest idea you've ever heard, that it get added to the agenda, so, on the item itself, Reverend Golden has already addressed much of this well, but I want, I want to back you up as to why this item is here in front of you. CSAB has funded this for the previous ten years, roughly? Thank you, and I don't see Mister Schreier here, so Mike and Susie, if you guys wanna, I might need you shortly, so, um, I might have questions for you shortly, um, the CSAB this year, over the, over the previous couple of years, the CSAB funding for It's Your Choice was dropping and dropping and dropping, and so, sure enough, this year, they were awarded zero, one of the very few applicants for CSAB funding, which was completely denied. So, the CSAB sent a message that they are not gonna support this, and so, as I said at kind of our last board meeting, um, I was there at the CSAB approval on behalf of Healthy Teens Coalition, and then through that process, that's where I ran into our school district staff, who has been doing this for a long time. So I said to the county commission that if we as a school board can relieve some of this pressure on the CSAB to support our public school students, because this program is directed to kids in our schools, this education is provided in our schools, and again, has shown, um, has shown dramatic, um, positive outcomes. Reverend Golden, you mentioned how we used to be one of the highest counties in the state as far as teen pregnancy rate, as far as repeat teen births, we are dropping like a rock in those, in those metrics, and I, I think it's safe to say that it's programs like It's Your Choice, now rebranded as Stand, um, for all these reasons we're talking about, um, that has contributed greatly to that, and, um, and it's, I mean, I, I don't need to repeat what's in the, um, what's in the agenda item, but Mike and Susie can, excuse me, can talk a lot, in a lot more detail about what classes, uh, these instructors are going into, can talk about, uh, much of what's already on the item has been, uh, but how, where this instruction is delivered and how it's delivered, and I'll, I'll make one final statement, Mike, before, if the chair allows it, um, that, that the Florida education model is, um, the way school success is measured is by test scores and, um, well, basically by test scores and, and school grades, but there are things that our kids are dealing with that are a lot more pressing matters to them than math class and English class, and it is the things that they're dealing with in their schools, it's the things they're dealing with in their homes, um, the stress of peer pressure and bullying that they're dealing with, mental health, John talked about earlier, about the, the, the mental health focus that's coming down from the legislature, I think this perfectly aligns with that, um, and, and, and like I said, my, my two biggest things are, we've been doing this for a long time, very successfully, and this is a place where, um, you know, for lack of a better term, the county commission has said, and I think the CSI, Gene, I don't wanna put any words in the...
I was gonna talk.
CSAB's mouth, but, um, you know, have basically said, like, these are school district kids, this is the school district's job, and, um, that's, it came right out of two commissioners' mouths, so, uh, that's, that's why I bring it here for you tonight, so I know, it looks like right now we're about two to two, so, um, and there, as, as has been said, you know, budgets are about priorities, and I, and this is such a small investment to get such positive outcomes for our students that aren't measured on any test and aren't measured in any school grade, it's a very small amount of money to have a gigantic impact.
Board member Hope, or no, uh, vice chair, messenger, okay.
Good old swing vote messenger, that's my...
Back to it.
He's, he's watchdog, I'm swing vote. No, I'm, I'm actually kind of, um, torn on this one, because I am a member of the CSAB, and so, I want to give an understanding of the CSAB's mindset. First of all, the two items that came before the CSAB that say school to sugar Manatee County, I'm not allowed to vote on them, I'm not allowed to grade them, I'm not allowed to discuss them because I am on this board, so that makes it very difficult when we are voting on what can be funded, what can't be funded, 'cause those are the, there's two that I can't even touch in the CSAB, and this is one of the two, um, but the mindset of the Children's Services Advisory Board is a funding of an investor mindset where the application is set up, um, in such a way that creates a score. The scores were then, um, averaged by the Manatee County staff, and the CSAB just made a cut mark, anybody that's below this score is not getting funded, and, and it was not anything personal, it was just, this is the score, first they funded priorities, this one was not listed under the priorities, and then they said, anything under this score, we're not funding it, and that was the mindset. The, my understanding of the funding that comes from the Children's Services Advisory Board and that tax is that it's specific to items that could not be funded by the school district. That was my understanding, is that this program and the other programs should not be funded by our tax dollars and should be funded by county dollars, that was my understanding of the purpose of the Children's Services Advisory Board and that tax, is that these should be things that are in addition to, that are not legal requirements by the school district, and I think that is why maybe the county commissioners don't quite understand that, they can say that those are the students, but so is every other program approved that they approved, they're all Manatee County students, every single program that they approved are the kids, and in fact, three of the other programs that are listed here, their support partners, were funded from the CSAB, so, I don't, I'm really quite torn because I, I think this is a really good program, I really do, but I don't know, if we do this, the CSAB will never fund it again, because the mindset of that board, of that committee, is that if you can get funding somewhere else, you're not gonna get it from us, so if you, if we approve this, it will always be part of our budget, it will be recurrent, it will not be a one-off, it will not be one year where, okay, we took two hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be every single year, because the CSAB is never going to give it.
I agree with that.
They're...
They're never gonna give it.
Well, they might next year if, if things were different, I don't know, I, you know what, that, this is the toughest part of being on that board, is not being able to, to me, defend what I think are good programs that the school district does, and that makes it very difficult, but I worry that if we approve this, that it will be a recurrent cost, and it will never go back to the Children's Services Advisory Board, and even if they try, this, they're not gonna approve it, because that's what they do, they look, if you can, if you're trying to supply money from somewhere else, they're not, they aren't gonna touch it, so those are my concerns, I'm, like I said, I, I really believe this is a great program, and I'm really, really very torn, um, swing vote messenger, but I, I guess my only question would be, and I'm not sure I'd be comfortable voting on this tonight, however, since there is more money, or of specific grants, I believe, for mental health and other things like that, is it possible to use some of that money for this, and I, you don't have to answer that now, I mean...
Yeah, okay.
What would happen, because this is not part of the district, it's an outside vendor, so we would have to contract with this agency to deliver these services, 'cause it's, it's not part of our, like Charlie said, it used to be It's Your Choice, now it's a different organization, uh, all of the money that was designated, new money from Parkland for mental health, we've already contracted with Centerstone, um, you know, like many of the initiatives that we're asking, the Just For Girls, the, the This Situation and Compensation, it's our job to go back and see what funds are available to do the, the board's initiatives, so, um, as you said, we would have to bring a contract forward for this to pass, because there, there's, has to be a contract with that agency, so, um, if, if you would like for us to explore funding opportunities in that, um, I can discuss it with board briefing options for the next board meeting, that may be the best path on this item, because we would have to go back and look where the best funding source would be.
Okay, board, vice chair, message.
Okay, I would appreciate that, my biggest concern is where the money would come from, and my other big concern, like I said, this is, once again, would be a recurrent cost, and I'm concerned about that as well, and the merits of the program are great, I just wanna make sure that, that's something that we're really willing to do for years and years. that we're really willing to do for years and years and years. Keeping in mind that any money we spend on this could be less money to pay teachers, could be less money to pay our bus drivers or anyone else, because if we can't get it from a grant, that's where it's going to come from, and we know that. I mean, I think we all know that. Finally, I really just want to address the fact that this was not added to the agenda prior to the meeting. I take a lot of time to read everything. And when something is dropped on my lap at 5:45 or 6 o'clock or whatever time it was, that's not fair to any other board member sitting up here that hasn't had the time to review it like you did. It creates a lot more time just talking about what's going to be added to the agenda when we might vote it down, but we don't even have the opportunity to discuss it. I just, I don't feel like that's fair to this board. And I have a lot of respect for you and and what you do, but I just think that that's just not fair to the rest of us.
Thank you. Board, Board Member Hope.
Yeah, and I appreciate Vice Chair Messenger's comments, but, but, I mean, these, these top, this is public health education. I mean, it's public health education, there are other organizations that are responsible for this. Our primary responsibility is not public health management, public health education. And a perfect example is the Partnership School, I'm very supportive of, but but we're not funding and providing the the healthcare services in that school and those those services. MCR is, that's, that's, that's what they do, and and they get funding from the federal government for that and and other agencies. The the county, and I'm, I'm happy to go speak with the county commission when this comes up again, because the funding for the county health departments is partially funded by the state and the county commission. It's their responsibility. Addressing these issues is is the local health department's responsibility, as I mentioned, AHEC, and these other organizations, and Centerstone. We do contract with Centerstone for our our behavioral health component of the fundings from the state. That's, we we pay them for that. And 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 just because, I understand you don't play in the for-profit healthcare world, but that's been my world for a number of years, I just want you to know, the patient revenue for Blake Medical Center last year was $1,966,864,240. So let's just call it $2 billion in in revenues. So I I just, I I, I think it's a slippery slope for us to get into directly funding public health programs and public health education programs. If it's being taught as a component in our own health courses or through our, our, you know, PE courses and things like that, but it's not our business, and it's not our business to fund it if there were a grant. I'm pretty, you know, in a way upset that that you had a couple of county commissioners that took the attitude of, well, you guys got all this money and you have all this millage and you go pay for it, because they are responsible for public health. That's why the county commissions are required to partially fund their share of the county public health departments, and that's what they do. They deal with sexually transmitted diseases and and teen pregnancies and things like that, that that's what they do. But any dollar that we commit, or even any dollar that we go out and try to raise for public health programs is is money that that we're not, we're not spending on our core. That being said, a, we need a healthy child in our classrooms. And we need everybody to come together to help ensure that 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 our students do practice good public health and 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 preventive services. But so many of these are funded by 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 other government programs, I cannot justify, you know, you know, approving it at this time. And, you know, I'll just reiterate, and and I'd like to know who the county commissioners were that decided that, and I'll, and I'll talk, I hope one of them wasn't the nurse that's on the county commission.
Not commissioner.
No, but, no, not publicly, not publicly, not publicly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Hope. Okay, Board Member Golden.
There's an African proverb that says, when the elephants fight, nothing gets hurt but the grass. This is, this is two elephants fighting, the school board, the county commission, the Department of Health, you, you, you name it, that's where it is. The bottom line is that without this funding, the number of children that are benefiting from it now stops when? Tomorrow, next week, next month? I beg your pardon?
Next week, October 1, everything's October 1.
See, so, so all that we're talking about here takes place after October 1, and every day after October 1 is a day that we can say, I had an opportunity to do something about this on the 24th of September, but I chose not to. Whatever reason you choose not to, it doesn't really matter, because the outcome is the same. The children who would benefit from this will not benefit. The problem of next year's funding, the problem of continuing funding, all of those are problems we have an opportunity to solve between now and next October, or next, next, next time we come up in here. That, 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 there is an urgency, there's an immediacy about these children. And when we read about them in November and in January and in February about the ones that gave up and did something really foolish, we won't even think about this tonight. We'll be on to another problem. But at some point, you have to stop and think about the human, the human costs of doing nothing. The human cost of delay, the human cost of, as we see it, the national level kicking the can down the road. So I'm praying, we have an opportunity for a small amount of money to do a lot of good right now. The problems that we're talking about, the issues that we are worried about, those are issues that can wait. This can't wait. And I, I pray that 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 we can at least cobble three votes to do this this year. I'm not voting to do it every year. I'm not voting to to do it, I'm, I'm voting because everybody else that had a chance to help said no. Two county commissioners took the cavalier attitude that this is the school board's problem. It's not, it is the community's problem. But now, the community is looking to the school board. Everybody that's out there looking on these monitors are going to see whether or not we're going to simply pass it on, or whether we're really going to do something. Sometimes, sometimes you, sometimes you just have to set an example. What's right is just going to be what's right, no matter what it costs. And to do what's right here costs $221,000. I know all of the other horror stories that exist and what will possibly happen, but that, that, that's just symptomatic of what's wrong in our community. We have a chance to 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 say something here that will help a lot of people that can't help themselves, and I hope we take it, I really do. I'm, just, it's, it's a hurtful thing to see people hurting and know that you have the ability to change that, but you won't because of some other longer hurt that may or may not occur. We, we very rarely get this opportunity, I hope we use it well, that's all. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Golden. Board Member Kennedy.
Reverend Golden, I appreciate the the support and the comments, you're exactly right. I do want to reiterate, I mean, I have an idea on where we could go from here, but I do want to reiterate again that these are existing partnerships, they're existing programs that are being delivered in our schools right now, so this is not, this is not anything new. Gina, your, your point about this will take money away from teacher salary in our contract negotiations, that is true, although I have an alternate idea for that, but this is to hire or to pay for the staff who will be delivering this education with our, with our partners. So that said, we've, we're two to two with swing vote messenger, and so we, so perhaps, and I, I don't want to make a, make a motion to direct the superintendent, because I think the superintendent is open-minded to come back to us with potential ideas. I mean, I, I still would love to convince you to support this, but I, my gut feeling says you're not there yet, so, so I, you know, Reverend Golden said it beautifully, I don't need to repeat, but.
Then why do you keep talking, man? Let's vote.
Okay.
Well, because we're not there yet, and so.
And the more you talk, the further away we're going to get.
Well, maybe, okay, you want to make a motion to direct the superintendent to come up with an idea?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. I, I think that we've heard some eloquent, you know, comments on here. I'd like to make some comments. And I, I've been in this position about going to the county for money, some of you may recall it, about 40 years ago when I was president of Manatee Children's Services. And I was out raising money by having rummage sales. That was how we, you know, first got going with money. And it wasn't a very efficient way to get money to help abused and neglected children in this community, I fought for them. And I went to the county commission and I said, we'd like to get $15,000, you know, for the children, for abused and neglected children, you know, to have counseling services and a, and a director. And I was sort of acting like a director at that time. It was pretty much all, you know, volunteer. And I remember one of the commissioners said, you know, if, you know, this is the county commission, there wasn't any of this children's services at that time. We give you that money, we, we might have to lay off or cut back on the time of one of our employees. And I said, well, I think you could probably get it someplace else, but I've been in that position. You know, I view our approval of this as enabling irresponsibility on part of the board of county commissioners. Their responsibility, the people of this community pass a special tax for this kind of matter. It's their responsibility, when we asked them to continue 50-50 about protecting children in our schools, they basically told us to go jump in the lake. They said, we don't have the money. Now, that was just the nicest kind of way of saying, just untrue. And I, I remember the nurse there saying, oh gee, I don't have the money. Well, hell, they, excuse me, I'll take that back. They had the money. But I wrote an article that appeared in some of the newspapers that, you know, fundamental providing safety for our citizens was critical, essential, and part of the responsibility of the sheriff's department. I don't care if the kids were in school, on the street, or whatever, they had a responsibility. They didn't think so. We, so we had to, no longer had that 50-50 deal. I think we've enabled their irresponsibility about the safety, I think they're irresponsible about this program. And I think the, the word should go out to the county commissioners that it's time to be responsible about these things, and I don't think that passing this sends that message at all that says, we'll enable you to not do it. And that's how I feel about it now. It's a great program. I think it's a program that it's time for this county commission to stand up and be responsible about it, and don't look to the school board of Manatee County to do the job you're supposed to be doing. So anyway, let's call a question. Or you have a further comment?
This, this is exactly the comment that I made to the county commission at their final approval of these items, was that there, for whatever reason, historically or whatever, there seems to me to be a strained relationship between the school board and the county commission. And I, I went to them and said, let us partner with you, let, let us take this off your plate to serve these kids. And I just think dressing down the county commission in a public meeting is very counterproductive for you. And the point of bringing this forward was to, was to just build that bridge between the school board and the county commission.
You're taking away from the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, our teachers and everybody else to build that.
Or, or maybe the superintendent might come back in two weeks with an idea of how we could fund this.
Well, it's not there tonight. Okay, we'll call the question, all those in favor of, I guess it was Mr., okay, I, I'm getting screams at they, okay, you want to talk some more? I'm sorry. Who wants to make further comment?
I don't understand why we don't just table this, so that she can come forward with some other kind of funding. Keeping in mind, I really wouldn't be in fun, in favor of any kind of funding that took away from something that we were legally responsible to do. We talk about all the underfunded mandates, we talk about, I mean, we talk about, we got copies of our legislative platform today and how far behind we are in funding. So unless there's a rabbit out of your hat, I mean, that's, that's all I could see. I have serious concerns.
We will evaluate.
Second the motion to table.
Okay, I need some help from council. We have a pending motion to approve this funding, and now we have a motion to table it. Can we proceed with discussion on, it's been seconded, to discuss tabling the motion to fund this?
Yes, that, that the discussion now changes to whether to table the item or not.
Okay, that's a, okay, discussion. Okay, Board Member Golden.
Call a question.
Well, that's not a discussion, but.
Well, at this point, I think everybody's made it quite clear, so either you're going to get a 3-2 vote to table, or you're going to get a 3-2 vote not to table, in which case we'll go back to the original motion, and then we're going to get a 3-2 vote that's going to rule it down. I mean, come on, man.
Mr. Chairman.
Is, is there any discussion?
This is on the tabling.
On the tabling.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I heard the vice chair, and I, I'm paraphrasing, unless there's like a rabbit to pull out of the hat.
That was the exact quote, that wasn't paraphrasing.
Then, I mean, because, because quite frankly, I mean, any time and effort the superintendent's going to spend on funding a public health program that's not our responsibility is time that she is taking away from trying to find funding for underfunded mandates and and everything else. I, I think we need to draw the line. We are the local education authority, and quite frankly, it, it, it doesn't really include public health education that already has a local agency that bears that responsibility. And that's what this pro, that's what these programs are. I don't know any other way to define these programs other than public health and public health education, and that is not our charge. It's not our charge in statutes. There are other organizations, governmental organizations in this county and this state that have that responsibility. And and I'm, I, I appreciate the superintendent, and I, I eat, drink and sleep public health, but I, I appreciate the superintendent trying to solve all these problems, it's not her problem. I'm happy to go back to the county commission, I'll work with Mr. Kennedy, but her responsibility is not trying to find funding for public health education programs, I don't care whether it's in our schools or not. There are other government agencies that get funding locally and from the state to do these programs, and they're clearly within these definitions. And so I'm not even going to support tabling, I'd like to just move on to something else.
Okay, thank, thank you, Board Member Hope. Now, okay, on the, the issue is whether to approve Vice Chair Messenger's motion to table. That's what we're discussing at this moment now.
I didn't make that motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
No, he interpreted as a motion and seconded it, but I never made a motion.
Okay, so there isn't.
I'll make a motion to table this item.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion now.
So we debated an item that wasn't, okay, never mind. It's been a long.
Okay, now, now we, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy to table, and it's been seconded by Board Member Golden. Okay. Now, Board Member Hope has spoken with respect to this particular issue. Board Member Hope has spoken with respect to this particular issue. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this particular issue? Board Member Kennedy.
Yeah, we have a very smart and creative superintendent, and I want to thank her in advance for the efforts that she will take before the next meeting to bring this back to us. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion regarding this motion to table? Okay, the chair hears none. So, um. All those in favor of Mr. Kennedy's motion. To table, that's been seconded by Mr., uh, Board Member Golden, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, indicate by saying nay.
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 Um.
You didn't vote aye, man.
No, I know, I can't decide, it's free vote messenger.
You have to vote.
I know. All right, aye, I vote in favor.
Okay, so, uh, there is.
What did she say?
She said she voted in favor, she wants to.
Table.
To, she votes the, an aye for table, okay. So the vote is three to two in favor of tabling, um, this matter concerning, uh, you know, funding. And, and I guess this is Mr., uh, Board Member Kennedy's, you know, motion, okay? So.
Workshop request.
Now, get the workshop request. So, um. Anybody has any thoughts about workshop at this point? And we'll move on.
Mr. Minor, I will put on, as requested earlier from the workshop with Ms. Foreman. About the discussion of the logistics of the internal auditor. So I just wanted you to know, I, we, we've got that scheduled for the next one.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh. I think we're legal update.
Mr. Chairman, just one small item of interest. I received correspondence several days ago from a personal injury firm, uh, in the center of the state, I think Winter Haven, could be Winter Park. Recruiting plaintiff school boards in a proposed class action against, I believe, the Juul vaping manufacturer. I provided it to the superintendent. I think other districts around the state are discussing it, but I can't tell at this point if it's gaining traction among the other school boards. But I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Okay, thank you. Instructional update, Deputy Superintendent Chanelle Yost.
Thank you, sir. There are seven of our schools that are undergoing onsite evaluations this week to be considered as blue ribbon schools of excellence. It is a very rigorous onsite evaluation comparable to our advanced debt accreditation type visits. They have spoken with parents, they've reviewed lots of data and information, and providing about an hour and a half to two hours during an exit review with strong recommendations for improvement. So we'll look forward to hearing more from them throughout the week. They are meeting with the, several of the administrators from the organization. Will be meeting with the superintendent tomorrow afternoon, so we'll afford to hearing more there. What you've received is a summary of the Hispanic heritage events that are occurring within our schools. So please partake if you have the opportunity to do so. Additionally, under the area of hol- Holocaust education, embracing our differences, the letters from Ann and Martin, the performances are occurring. The rest of this week, and there is an evening performance Thursday evening at the Arts Center. So if you're able to join us for any of those performances, we'd love to have you do so. My final item is regarding SOAR in four and the Van Wetzel. They are providing an opportunity to come together for professional learning this weekend, exploring drama, visual arts, science, and movement. Led by visual, visual artist Kat Shogren and Laura Porter. And it's from eight to eleven at the Performance Hall. Our teachers will receive a set of the Eric Carl books that they'll be able to bring back for their classroom libraries. They'll also be receiving a set of, um. Oil pa- pastel crayons, and will now be eligible for their students to participate in the possibility of a visit. Free of charge that will be funded, um, through four, SOAR to four, SOAR in four, my apologies, SOAR in four. So that's an opportunity within our community to enhance, um, our early learning opportunities and connect them to the arts. So we're excited about that opportunity and want to learn more.
Okay, thank you very much. Deputy Superintendent Wagner.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we have planned an all district job fair. Is planned for Saturday, October twelfth, at their, at the Wakeland Support Center, that's gonna be from nine to one. That'll be for instructional and operational. Number two, we have human resources working with a go-live for our new PeopleSoft recruitment wa- module for hiring. It's gonna go live October first with external applicants being able to submit their applications. A reminder that anyone who has submitted under our current system will have to reapply for any job that's posted. As that their resumes and applications are not gonna transfer over to the new system. Number three, we have a replacement chiller going on at Palmasola this weekend. Number four, we have an underground chilled water line being replaced at Braden River Elementary School. Should be completed in mid-October for that one. Legal ads are running for a construction manager for the SUG replacement project. They're all due October ninth. The benefits department celebrated almost three hundred new employees to be enrolled in our benefits, which will begin October first. And we're having open enrollment for all employees, October twenty-eighth to November s- November sixth. You may have saw that the district was accepted as a National Weather Service, uh, weather-ready National Ambassador by NOAA. It's the first time for this credential for our school system, and it allows for readiness, responsiveness, and resilience for extreme weather conditions. Paul D'Amico, our chief of safety and security and his team facilitated that. Tomorrow, twenty schools are participating and inviting their dads in for breakfast. We'll take your child to, take your dad to work, which is tomorrow. Tomorrow night also is our post-secondary education night at MTC Main Campus. It's from six to eight, all are invited, we have over eighty colleges attending. So please stop by that. And number ten, this past Saturday, we had our Career and Technical Student Organization Leadership Conference, and we had. You know, about nine hundred teachers and staff show up on a Saturday morning to learn about leadership, resilience, respect, responsibility. And it's such a great testament to our students, our schools, everyone's working so hard to advance education, so. Congratulations to all, and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. All right, um. I lost my page here, what's next?
I'm next.
Superintendent comments, thank you.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to tag along with Ms. Yost's comments in, think the Manatee County Bar Association. Uh, as well as the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. That's supported with embracing our difference on our Annie and Martin, uh, activity. We, we're gonna have more than thirty-two hundred high school students participate in this, so. I really do think it's gonna be a wonderful event, uh, as well for our students, but. Those of you that may not be able to go during the day, the event on Thursday night starts at seven. I, I think I told a few people it was at six, at the Manatee Performing Arts Center, so, um. I will be participating in that evening event to see the show, so, um. They just wanted to continue supporting the bar association with what they've been doing at SUG Middle School with their avid students. And it, it's just amazing how the community really is wrapping around support for many of the district initiatives going on right now. Uh, I went and attended, uh, an event on Friday, and I really would like to discuss it because it, it does go along with conversations from a workshop today. Jerry Chaffee, as well as with the Association of the Lulac event that I was awarded earlier, invited me to attend. An IDRA conference Friday in Fort Lauderdale. And this is an Equity Assistance Center that represents the southern region. It is federally funded, and they provide a lot of technical assistance and support. One of the things I did speak to them about is coming in and helping us bridge. The gap. With the community of LMAs. It's obvious that there are some. Perceptions that there needs to be some healing and some outreach. And I did feel like this center is non-bias, not, they're not from here, I can bring them in to give some support. They also work with a lot of restorative justice training, PD for, uh, culture awareness for employees. So there's a lot of resources that this, uh. Research Association can do to help us. And it was just, it was perfect timing for that event to happen. So I just wanted to make you aware that I will be working with them to come in to help do some collaboration in healing. After the resolution with LMAs decided. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. All right, um, board comments, uh, Board Member Golden, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, had an opportunity to. Do the beginning of the year. Trips that I make to all of the schools in District Five. And, um. Generally, uh, the concern, as you might expect, is safety and security. And specifically and particularly with the new camera systems that we have in the schools. And all the old ones that have not been upgraded. Everybody's concerned about blind spots and access to the campuses. And, um, I have promised them that I would try to make that, keep that uppermost in our minds. Uh, in terms of trying to make sure that we are doing all that we can possibly do, uh, to make sure that our children remain safe. Even one incident is, is not something that's, that's taught, so. And as such, I also want to, uh, to, and this is my second year, as Mrs. Messenger's, Vice Chair Messenger pointed out, I'm not a newbie anymore. So, uh, I'm going, uh, into the constituency, uh, meetings that we had last year. I have resumed them in September. The next set will be in October, October the third, on a Thursday from six to eight. And October the seventeenth, which is a Thursday, and that will also be from, um, six to eight. I don't know whether it's good news or bad news that nobody's coming. Last year, had a lot of folk that were showing up, but then we had a lot of different things to talk about. This year's been all quiet on YMCA front out there in, um, in, in the Lakewood Ranch area, so I'm happy about that. I guess that the last thing that I would like to, to bring up, and I'm not quite so sure how this happens, but. The, uh. The honoring that we do here. Is staff. People who help the district outside of the district. Chamber, I mean, we, I mean, we recognize a lot of people, but. And maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but I don't think that there's a formal recognition that we give the parents. Who volunteer in our schools. And, and the only reason this, this comes up is because I was at a school, and they got a group of people out there called SUG. What does that mean? But it means something, it's an acronym, but it's a group of volunteer parents at one of our schools. And so I'd like to have considered recognizing parents. Whether they sit, whether they do it individually or do it collectively. The parent volunteer groups that come down here and are recognized like we recognize all of the other, we recognize teachers, we recognize. Do that, so I'd like to consider that, uh, as something that we also put a spotlight on. I don't know how, how that comes about, but it's just out there now. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, okay. Let's see. Board Member Hope, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank the, uh. The folks that came out from the Experimental Aircraft Association and the Civil Air Patrol, they had been working, when I found out they had been working with Dr. Vions at, at MTC. On our program, and one of the things that Dr. Vions had, had mentioned throughout our meetings with the Airport Authority is, is kind of looking at how, you know, what are the revenues gonna be? And how do we sustain the program? And what I found interesting when I met these folks at the airport is every Saturday morning, middle schoolers and high schoolers. Go to the airport, and they're in like two T-hangers, and they literally manufacture an airplane. That they end up selling to somebody or building it for them. Uh, and they spend about eighteen to twenty-four months, and, and they're talking about taking up space. You know, utilizing some of the space in the facility that the Airport Authority's gonna be building. And it dawned on me that we could learn from their program, and our students can probably build far more aircraft as they learn. The, the profession of being an aviation airframe and power plant, um, uh, mechanic. And so I, I thought it was very interesting that they get referrals from Sarasota of, of, of students who need some extra attention and some diversion. And so, uh, they were anxious to come out and, and express their support. There's a group from MTC that will be traveling on October fourteenth to Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in Daytona. Because they have just completed a facility similar to what, uh, the Airport Authority is looking at with the same architects. And so we're, we're anxious to, to move that, that forward and provide, you know, additional job training for, for students. Both our dual enrollment and our young students, but it's been interesting that as word gets out, there are a number of older adults. That would like to attend the program at, at night and, and get that, that training and that certification. So I think it's, uh, a very exciting, a very exciting program. Congratulations, Mr. Kennedy. We, we have another shot at your, your program. And, uh, I, I maintain the commitment to help look at how that can get funded.
Appreciate it.
By organizations that, that take that responsibility, and don't get me wrong, I mean, I think we do need to provide level of public health education in our schools, but, but there are other entities that, uh. I would like to, to participate in that, so. With that, it's been a long day, Mr. Chairman, I think we've done good work, um, and I'm really, really tired. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, Vice, uh, Board Member Kennedy.
On that note, I will be very quick. As always, I want to just, uh. Say it out loud and put it out to the universe, so it'll keep coming back. But this is a academically and financially very strong district, and thank you to the superintendent and the team over here. Uh, and everybody in this room and at the schools, um, this is truly a group effort, and. Let's not, everybody, this community, let's not lose focus on the great things that are going on in this district, despite some of the drama that we have up here. That said too, we're gonna choose a new chair, uh, in November, and I would like to make a request of the board, and we could talk about it later. But I think it'd be good to have a check-in with like a, if you all remember the storming, norming, forming training we did with FSBA. I think we could use a little tune-up, uh, I don't wanna say we need to go to therapy, but, um. Maybe we need something like that, because, um, you know, I, I just feel like sometimes that we, and, and I'm speaking to myself as well, uh, because I, I slip and do this sometimes too. But I think, myself included, uh, need a little help in finding strategies to be respectful in disagreement. And, uh, I, I fully take blame for that myself, first and foremost, but, um. So that would just be my ask, we had a really good meeting, and, and we had a good discussion, and even though I disagree wholeheartedly with Dr. Hope's on health education, I think that is. Part of our role, because that's where our kids are, the kids, the, the kids that we want to reach are in our schools. But, uh, but I do appreciate, as you already talked about, the, your involvement with the, um, with the, the student pilots, and I ran into Dr. Vans somewhere around town, and she mentioned it to me. And I was like, wait a minute, I, I. I was like, wait a minute, I kind of remember this, but what are you talking about? And she's like, yeah, we got this great thing going, and Dr. Hopes has been a huge help. And I was like, well, that's fantastic. So, and I think that's important that we bring our personal interests and the projects that...
We didn't apply for that grant last year.
I remember a conversation about it, yeah, yeah. So it was kind of, took me a second to come back around, but I appreciate your efforts on that, and I hope we all will bring forward items that we think are, that are important to us. So thanks, everybody, for a good meeting, and Superintendent, thank you and the team.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Kennedy, Vice Chair Messenger.
Yeah, I just had a couple things. One, at the last board meeting, there were comments made about Palmetto High School's air conditioner being Manatee High's leftovers, and I got a little bit more information on that, and I really want to share that with the board, but share it with the community, because whenever misinformation is stated about any school, it hurts the reputation of that school. And I think we all believe in supporting all of the schools and making sure that accurate information is out there. So, the boiler, which I am not an AC person, although when I'm done with this, I'm going to go into MTC and learn all about it, because that pays way better than being a kindergarten teacher, but, actually, I'm going to be a mechanic, that's my thing. But, anyway, the boiler keeps the air conditioner so that the temperature is actually not freezing, from what I understand. And when that broke, the school district had a choice. Either don't have air conditioning or use temporarily Manatee High's until the new one was there and put in place. This was back in 2018. So that is what the school district did. Either have working air conditioner temporarily until the new one is in place, which is what happened in 2018. So Palmetto High has new equipment. It is not used equipment. It was used equipment, but it was temporary, and I think I'm representing what I was told accurately, but I want to make sure that information is out there, because anytime that misinformation is spoken, I really do think that hurts any of our schools. And as we've all said, there's really wonderful things happening, and I'd rather highlight those things. And to Mr. Golden's comment about volunteers, I'm pretty sure we do awards for volunteers. We have one for seniors, we have one for, I think, teens, and we have one for just adults, I think. I think there's two or three awards for volunteers, but that's only one volunteer per group for the whole county. I don't know how the schools do it. And then the last thing is, if you're an employee, go get your flu shot, and flu shots are available tomorrow and on Friday. You just got to bring your insurance, get it done. Nobody wants to be sick for two weeks and taking all kinds of meds and feeling miserable, and everybody says it feels like you got hit by a truck. So we don't really want those things, and you don't want those things, so go get your flu shot. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Well, thank you. I think this is over eight hours, and I think we're all getting kind of tired, so I won't take more than 45 minutes to cover some of the things I had in mind. But I think we went through quite a bit tonight. We found out some, you know, where we all stand on some things. And what I'd like to talk a little bit about is the future, way in the future until tomorrow. And I want to thank many people. I see Mr. Clark in the back there, who's worked very hard on the 2019 Manatee County School District Constitution Essay Contest, where students were asked to say what the U.S. Constitution means to us. It's been 33 years since this district had such a contest. I think that we're in the education business for our country, that having an educated populist helps preserve the republican form of government, that's a small R. And that's what a guy named Ben Franklin, you know, said when the Constitution Convention was, you know, finished, and told the lady when asked what kind of government we had, and she said, well, it's a republic government, and if you can keep it that way. And incidentally, Ben Franklin is coming to town. I don't know how many people are going to be out to see him, but he is coming to town. I think by horseback or by stagecoach. Anyway, he's going to be here tomorrow as part of the Manatee County School Bar Association meeting, and I'm looking forward to meeting him and hearing such witting sayings as a penny saved is a penny earned. And that's part of this essay contest where awards are going to be given out to the top five students of the Manatee County School District, the seniors, on their submission of essays, which are, you know, judged by a panel of distinguished people across, you know, the county. It started in the classroom. It's involved a lot of people, a lot of students, hundreds of students, many teachers. There were judges at the school levels, and I'm just going to read their names real quickly. At Bay Shore, it was Amber Lamar, and Gary Polly. Braden River, it was Jennifer Elston, and Eric Nelson. At Lakewood Ranch, Jennifer Grant. Patricia House, I guess. At Manatee High, Daria Zoller, and Stephen Murray. Palmetto High, Jennifer Little, and Frederick Tyler. Perry, well, excuse me, Southeast High, Sarah Bizik, and Carolyn Lucre. Horizons, Lauren, Laura Carroll, and Joy Clark. Thank you all. This was the, they judged the essays from the seniors at those high schools, and then they submitted them to the Curriculum Department, which is sponsoring this, and they sent it out to the judges in the community that included representatives of the League of Women Voters, the Daughters of American Revolution, two members of the Manatee School Board, and I'm leaving out a couple, but it's to come back and to have it collated, and it's going to end, you know, tomorrow, beginning of the noon luncheon, when the awards are going to be given, and Mary Glass of the Manatee Education Foundation is going to emcee the awards part of that meeting. And thank you, so we're thanking Manatee Education Foundation. We're thanking also Manatee players that's helping Ben Franklin with his wardrobe. It's a real community effort, and it's kind of, everybody coming together. And I mentioned Willie Clark in the back. Also, so much credit is deserving work by those in the Curriculum Department headed by Dr. Gibson. And so if you're watching still, thank you very much, and I'm leaving out dozens of names that deserve mention, and hopefully you'll get mentioned tomorrow. And it's a big event. I think it's great for the district, it's big for the community to remind how fundamental education is to our laws, our country. Thank you very much. We are closed.